To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this is the portion of our meeting that is devoted to public comments. If anybody in the audience would like to address the board publicly, now is the time to do it. Anyone tonight? Okay, then we'll move on to our next agenda item, our consent agenda, with some minutes to approve for the October 23 meeting and the payment of the bills. Is there a motion to approve? Let's move. Second. Any questions or additions or corrections? Those in favor say aye. Opposed? It passes. Move on to our action items. Mr. Nelson.
So unfortunately, last Wednesday, one of our fourth grade teachers, Jill Ruland, was in a serious car accident on Highway 60 and was in critical condition. And so GES was going to be doing their presentation tonight, and actually Jill and a couple of her kids are going to do a presentation for some of the things that she was doing in her classroom. But out of respect for the accident and just the things that are happening at GES, we're going to move GES's presentation to our next board meeting. I'd met with Ms. Noel after school today, and just with everything else going on, we'd met with all staff this morning and talked to them at 7:30. Both her and our school psychologist met with our students this morning, those fourth grade students that would be affected by it. And then this weekend, we'd sent out communication to all the board, all of our staff, all of our parents. So even though it's, you know, located at GES as a school community, as a family, when someone is hurt or grieving, we want to be able to support them. So all the things going on with that situation, we thought it'd be best to move GES's presentation to our next board meeting. And that's why Dr. Noel isn't here and why we will move on from that. Okay? So the next thing is really just a reminder for our audience, as well as two of our board members that are up for reelection, Dr. Ziegler and Mr. Rossi, as well as anyone that is interested in running for the school board, that the school board's spring election will be on April 3rd. We have two seats that are available. The candidate filing deadline is on Tuesday, January 2nd at 5:00 p.m. So that's just a reminder that that is upcoming, and if people are interested in information, they can contact either myself or Kara, and we'd be happy to fill information out we can for you. And then we have also our fall athletics has completed at the high school, and so I've asked Mr. Manthai to talk to us about some of our student athletes and their recognitions that they've received for athletics, as well as one for an academic area. Mr. Manthai.
Good evening, everyone. Very happy to give you some great information regarding our athletic programs from the fall, and the names are listed on our agenda for tonight, but we will recap first with some all-conference honors from the fall. Sarah Schmidt and Lauren Stilo were volleyball second-team all-conference. Sofia De La Pasqua was volleyball honorable mention. Brian Holdman was soccer honorable mention. Connor Ramsey was football first-team all-conference. John Kluck was football second-team all-conference. Kyle Prefarak, Brady Ward, and Joey Georgie all received honorable mention in the sport of football. Gordy Thompson was cross-country second-team all-conference, and Julia Willey, cross-country second-team all-conference as well. So those were all-conference awards. Team achievements from the fall. Volleyball, we're regional finalists and lost a very close match to advance there. Boys, cross-country state qualifiers and sectional runner-up. And girls, cross-country state qualifiers and also sectional champions. So both cross-country teams advancing to state, outstanding accomplishments. And some individual achievements for you to be aware of. John Kluck was a football academic all-state honoree, so bringing that academic piece into play as well, which is outstanding. Alyssa Job advanced to tennis subsectionals. Sofia Skolman, as a freshman, was diving, state qualifier for diving. And Olivia Conson was a swimming state qualifier as well. So lots of great things to celebrate from the fall. Wanted to make sure to get those names in front of you and acknowledge them for the public as well. So, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Manthai.
Excellent. And so, and thank you, Mr. Manthai, for doing that. I'd be remiss to not thank Karen and Jean, her secretary, for reaching out to -- they reached out to all of the fourth grade families individually, so I'd done that robo-call to everyone, but they reached out individually to families, as well as to individual staff members. So they put a lot of time and effort into the weekend contacting families and staff to make sure that parents were aware of it, as well as Cindy Zozak stepped into that fourth grade classroom today. We had a sub, but Cindy was in Jill's classroom. So those staff members and others are helping out in various ways, but I'd be remiss not to have mentioned them, so I should have said that in my opening comments about them. I want to thank them for their extra effort.
Okay, so we have some committee reports, and we have four committees. We'll start with the curriculum committee. Take it away, Karen.
The curriculum committee met on November 13th. The topics were elementary specialization, which Diana presented with her findings from the teachers' group and the committee and the team coming together with their recommendation that the teachers will not specialize third through fifth next year. And then we also talked about, it was an update given on elementary math and sixth through 12th math and the process that they're going through. And our next meeting is scheduled for January 8th, and she'll be presenting today on the school report cards that were finally not embargoed anymore.
Questions for Carrie or Diana? Move on to the goal-planning ad hoc committee.
The goal-planning ad hoc committee actually met twice since our last board meeting, once on October 30th and once on November 14th. We continue to work on draft of initial board goals for consideration by the full board, draft of initial objectives for each goal, and draft of success indicators. As part of our last two meetings, we've kind of settled on a timeline. Our thought would be to continue to meet through December into the early part of January and present a draft and an overview at the January 22nd board meeting. That would give the board February and March to, and April to some degree, to mull them over and then fall into a timeline or a framework for finalization and annual development of those board goals. So the 22nd of January, we'll be presenting to the full board the work as it is.
Any questions for Paul? Okay, thanks, Paul. Keep you on the hot seat for the finance committee.
The finance committee met on November 30th, and the two items that were discussed, an update on the performance contracting and a resolution regarding the authorization of the issuance of sale of 2.1 million note anticipation notes were the topics for that meeting. And the committee is recommending that we pass a resolution authorizing the issuance and boarding of the sale of 2.16 million note anticipation notes. It will be further discussed on the agenda.
Questions for Paul or Paul. Okay, and then finally, our policy committee.
The policy committee also met on November 13th. We discussed four policies. The first was the catastrophic leave, so we had some discussion on that, and we had one reading, and that'll be on tonight's agenda a little bit later to talk through that policy that we are recommending. We also had three additional first readings of some new proposed policies. 345.4 was combining and simplifying some existing policies, and those were in promotion, placement, and retention. We also reviewed 341.31, human growth and development, as well as 347, which is student records. So all of those were first readings. The last three, we'll have a second reading at our next meeting on January 8th. In addition to that, we'll also have some additional 300 policies that we'll be doing first readings of in that January 8 meeting.
Any questions for Steve? Okay, thank you, everyone. Move on to our performance contract update.
What we'd like to do is we'd like to move D and E to after I, because there will be a, what you decide on I will determine recommendation that would go along with D and E. And so if we can move, if we can move to personnel report, we would appreciate that. And personnel report is just informational. It's a new hire for our interpreter at Graffin High School. How do I say her name? I'm sorry. I meant to talk to Mr. Manthai. How do I say her name? Desiree Iric?
Yeah.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Manthai. Very supportive. She is taking over our interpreter position, has taken over that role in that role. So it's informational, and they say you know that we have an interpreter that has started earlier this month. And then the next item is grandfathering elementary students. So I have a brief for you there, talking about that at the October 23rd board meeting, the board decided to, they concurred with the administration's recommendation to not grandfather students for the 18, 19 school year. New elementary school boundaries following that meeting, both myself, as well as board members, receiving more information from families requesting the board to consider it. Individual board members have approached me, saying, you know, can we have a discussion about this again? So we've provided more information, or updated information, I guess, for the board to have a discussion about that. As I mentioned in this, if the board decides to allow exceptions, issues such as transportation, placement of siblings, and class sizes need to be discussed. So as at our October 23rd board meeting, the administration had recommended not grandfathering, but if the board were to consider it, to consider fifth grade. And that seems to be the thing that I've heard the most from parents in the community, as well as individual board members, asking us to take a look at that again. And so we have on the backside of that folder is information that we have with this. And so we've looked at this a lot of different times, and you've seen this data many times, and so hopefully you're familiar with it. So at the top is what we started with when we were looking at option D. Current enrollment, we took this year's enrollment and to say, you know, what does that look like? Because we don't look at boundary lines and have as many grades as possible, so statistically it'd be as accurate as possible for us moving forward. So that's what, if we had used our boundaries this year, this is what our, this is what our boundaries, our school sizes will look like and our class sizes will look like. So then we moved on to our recommendation, and we chose, when the board chose option D, then we looked at, talking about open enrollment students, and where would open, where would all of our students, we're going to have open enrollment here, but all of our students, where would they go? So students that are attending Kennedy Elementary in 2018, 19, coming from Graffin Elementary, you can see across the board the number of students that it would be. Kennedy Elementary, Woodview Elementary, this is obviously a concern that was brought forward. There were two from Woodview going to Kennedy, and I'll come back to that. And then attending Woodview Elementary, you can see from GES, from Kennedy, those that are currently at Woodview Elementary that are going through. So you can see attending Woodview, there's 10 from GES, there's 11 from Kennedy that would be attending Woodview. So here if you scroll down. So then on 10/23, we had a discussion about open enrolled students and trying to balance out our class sizes. And so to do that, we looked to see, okay, you know, resident students are being placed by boundary lines, open enrolled students are, they're just, we were saying they have a spot in our district, but what school that is, is based on our need for classes to be appropriate. And so you can see that then we said open enrolled to Woodview, open enrolled to Kennedy, 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 Woodview. We broke them up in order to try and balance our class sizes out. Since we, since that 10/23 board meeting, we've had some change, so the thing that you have in front of you has been updated with various things, and that's because whether, once we just said open enrolled, we'd said all across the board, open enrolled to go there, well then there's some that had siblings. And then those siblings, we needed that sibling to go to a different grade level, because that really impacted our class sizes. So maybe it was siblings, maybe it was, there's one where, one became a resident, one became open enrollment, because they had moved their tuition waiver. They moved out of our districts, their tuition waiver, open enrollment. So there's been a couple minor changes that would impact those different numbers. You can still see, looking at fifth grade, you can see the open enrolled, there's six that go to Kennedy. So two of them became tuition waiver from Woodview. Two of them are, were currently open enrolled at Woodview. Two of them were currently open enrolled at Kennedy. And so that's where you got that six. Okay, so there's, so although we say that there's two from Woodview going to Kennedy in fifth grade, there's six going to Woodview from Kennedy, because
Two Kennedy from Woodview.
I'm sorry. Yeah, thank you. It's good you're listening. To Kennedy from Woodview, because those six are two resident, two open enrolled, and two resident that are becoming open enrolled. And then you can see currently, Kennedy assigned to Woodview, there are 10 kids, that's still the accurate number, 11 kids, excuse me, 11 kids going to fifth grade from there. And then there are 10 from GES that would be going to Woodview as well. So you've asked for updated information, and we've tried to provide that in a similar fashion to what we've done in the past with an update, updated, and I can answer any questions. Do you have data or?
So this is back on the table, because several board members have reached out to Jeff and me individually, saying they'd like to revisit this one piece of that grandfathering request. Can we help out this small number of families and students who are caught in this, you know, my last year at this school dilemma? And even though at the last meeting, we said, you know, we're going to make it a clean sweep, people are bringing it back to the table, because if we can help, we should help. If it doesn't cause us other, you know, domino effects and problems down the road, doesn't open up any can of worms or anything like that, then we should do it, if it, you know, if it makes sense to help these families out. So I guess what I'll do is I'll throw it out there, several of you have reached out, maybe if someone wants to speak to the motion, or make a proposal, or make a motion, or ask Mr. Nelson some questions, but I'd like those of you who maybe originally brought it back up, leave the discussion.
Jeff, can you revisit that, the six open enrollment to Kennedy?
No. Yeah, the open enrolled to Kennedy, because it went from four to six, so
Yep, so two became tuition waiver from Woodview. So they, they currently attend Woodview, they've moved out of our districts, now they've become tuition waiver, which would, if they applied for open enrollment next year, they would, they would be open enrolled, and then we would move them to Kennedy to even it out to 62 and 62.
Okay.
So that's why that number went up, two more.
So one of the things that I asked Jeff when we, when this came back, was, you know, can we do this without creating a trouble for class size, without creating other problems, you know? And it seemed like the answer was yes. I think that answer is still yes, that it doesn't create a crunch in classrooms that would be unmanageable. And that, that's all my concern, is that it doesn't create a problem that we just don't need right now.
I guess I'm still on the fence here with the, I understand it is six from Woodview moving to Kennedy. I'm not sure if you give those six a choice, how you compare that to a class of 10, you know, well, there's 10 going. Well, if one of them, is it six, seven, eight, nine? What is the magic number that we say? Do we accommodate six students in those six, which will throw off? If all six chose to go to Woodview, you suddenly have 68 at Woodview and 56 at Kennedy. So it does start to cause class sizes to be slightly unequal. And then do you offer Kennedy the same courtesy that, to say, even though there are 11 of them, do some of you want to stay at Kennedy? And if you ask that, then do you have to ask Graffin Elementary School parents, whose children are, do you want to? You know, there's only 10 going to Woodview. Do you want to go to Kennedy? Or how do you decide that?
Jeff, how many people from Kennedy in going into the fifth grade, were there a number that asked to stay at Kennedy? I know there was one, for sure.
Um, yeah, I can't, I couldn't give you an accurate answer on that. I apologize.
Okay.
Yeah, they all, as they were asking, we were trying to be responsive and ended up not even, in my mind, mattering, whether it was Woodview or Kennedy, or even GES asking about it that way. So I don't know the interest, you know, that people have shown out of that 11, or for that matter, out of that six. You know, I know of a few, but
Right, I think if it's not opened up to, you know, they may not have come forward. Well, there's some parents who would say, well, that was the decision, I didn't realize there was an option to come forward. You know, like, I just said, okay, I guess that's what I'm going to do.
I think your point is very well taken, that if we were going to open this up, it would appear that it would need to be opened up. And that would be my thought. Board can choose to do what it would like. I think, you know, it is a unique situation in that we only have 124 students in going into fifth grade next year. And so if you're ever going to try and allow there to be inequity, you could allow that. Now however, with that being said, if, if one school were to shift a large number of students from one school to another, when it came for us to be able to look at FTE, we would have to be cognizant of district finances, and it would be irresponsible for us to be having extremely tiny classes at one fifth grade and larger class sizes at another. And that, if you let, let's say you had, let's say you had, let's say 15 kids shift over, if you had, let's say you had 12 kids shift over from one building to another, and you had 50 in 74 at another, 74 is still a good number for three, that's 25, you're in a good spot. 50 with three teachers, and then I could use district finances to have 16, 17 students. We don't, and we don't know how that would play out with people, like you say, because I think the board wants to look at this, I think you have to have a conversation about, would you allow, if you look at siblings, then you're really going to throw us off. And then those families are going to be there a long time. So if you say, well, it would only be for the oldest child, and then, so parents may have to be at two different schools, would that eliminate some people? Are you going to allow them to ride buses? Are you going to allow them to get dropped off at a spot for transportation? Or are they going to commute themselves? Those are all things that, from the district's perspective, the board needs to weigh and consider for those.
I guess I looked at it a little bit different. I looked at it as not a grandfathering, in any case, but more a petition for emergency relief of assigned elementary boundaries, not to be technical. But, so when could you do that? You could petition for emergency relief if there's only four or fewer students from one school that have been asked to transfer to another school. Because everything that I've heard is, well, it's, it's a relatively narrow band of instances where a student or a couple of students are being asked to move without any or many of their potential friends. So instead of calling this grandfathering, let's really narrow this down, it really isn't grandfathering. The relief is available for only one transitional year. It's not forever. We're not creating a grandfathering clause here. We're just creating an opportunity for individual parents to petition to the administration for consideration of their child staying where they're at. And we would narrowly define the parameters for consideration. Impact on student requesting relief, impact on class size resulting from grant of emergency relief, cumulative impact on class sizes for all of the grants, the history of the family's attendance that turned assigned to elementary school. Administration can reserve the right to interview the impacted students with their parents. I think sometimes parents get more worked up than the kids may be worked up regarding that change. The relief is available for only one transitional period, one year only, it's not a forever thing. Parents will be responsible for providing their own transportation, under no circumstances will shuttle be considered. That the recommendation for grant of emergency relief will be made by administration, a final approval by the board, and all board decisions are final. There'd be a window of time that you could petition for relief, and there'd be a date, calendar date certain upon which we would affect on those petitions. So it's not a grandfathering. It's not that we'd have to consider this year in and year out.
Are you proposing that, then, for all fifth grade? Are all students who are going to be in fifth grade, or the one that, six of the students?
I'm proposing it for any student where there are four or fewer students being asked to transfer.
I don't think that, but that's not true at any of the schools.
I thought that was true.
Well, it's true of Woodview.
Well, you have
But then some are open enrolled, though, and we're
So if you have six going from the class, you're telling me, because four of them are open enrolled students, those are classics?
The argument that, the argument that has been made in the, in the things that I've received is that, you know, you're asking, you know, my son or daughter is going to be impacted, because they're not moving with anybody that they know, or very few people are impacted.
But if it's open enrolled students been with you the whole time, you know what I'm saying, like, the two who just moved, who just moved out of our district and you're possibly, you know, are going to open enroll, those been of your classmates, that could have been your classmate for years, but because they don't count now as a classmate, you know, like, I would still say six are going from a class, regardless of, if they were your classmate this year, they're your classmate next year. I don't see the distinction between a resident student and an open enrolled student. I feel six are moving.
Are you making that?
I'm not making that distinction, no. I'm just making a distinction of a student.
And, because I view it similarly in terms of, viewed it more as an exception, and really only as opposed to saying one year, like, you know, fifth grade. But, you know, because my initial thought was, you have, to have D over C, was you'd have more kids moving to have more likelihood of friends moving with them. But that's not the case with, certainly with one of the parents who emailed in. It's just two people. So that, you know, that, to me, that's definitely not grandfathering, it's not how I was thinking about it, it was more
I agree.
Making assumptions.
Now, is there a process? I mean, I like the thought of having, you know, petition and, you know, however the decision gets made to say, okay, next year, you can stay, but you're, you provide transportation, it's one year, it's only the oldest, it's just that, it's, you decide to have triplets, that, that doesn't, you know, fall under that, it's just that one.
Just that, this one transitional year.
Jeff, when you made the recommendation last time, and you said, if you're going to allow one thin slice, we would recommend this be it, how many kids were affected in that recommendation that you guys made? I'm trying to remember the numbers here. If we're going to do it the way you got, you had recommended when we made the grandfathering vote, what was that recommendation?
We did not have a number, because we, because there were so many variables that we'd go with, similar to what both Paul and Carrie and Jerry are eloquently speaking about. It's like, it depends on where we're going to draw the line at. So is it, is it at the, now it's six kids that are going from Woodview to Kennedy, is that a magic number? Is it 10 kids that are going from GES to Woodview? Is it the 11 kids that are going from Kennedy to Woodview? What we were saying was that, administration was saying that we believe there's flexibility in that number with the class sizes, that you would be able to absorb that and not have extremely large class sizes that would go with that. But, but, so we had said, if you're going to look at, you're going to look at fifth grade only, because everything else really has a domino effect of how difficult it makes it for all of our other classes.
And I would, I would be fifth grade only, but you, the petition method.
That was, yeah, that was the only thing we'd said. We'd recommended, if you were at the board to consider anything, fifth grade would be the place that we would consider it. It is, you know, could be last year, it could be whatever, that would be the time that would make sense. And because there was space, if the board wanted to do that, we could. You could set a limit, you know, we couldn't, you could do a lottery, I mean, there's various things we could do that wouldn't make it so that we get, you know, 80 at one and, you know, 40 at another, because that would be a different issue that would go with that. So if everyone were to choose one school, everyone was, you know, and that's the thing about, we don't know. We know of a few people who've reached out. We know other people that have reached out to say, like, although my kids are, I just got an email today, although my kids are moving, and I wish they were staying, I appreciate the work the board's done, I appreciate the communication, and we're looking forward to a great year, because we believe all teachers are great in our district, and we're happy to be in this district. And so, you know, I don't know if we should punish people who haven't reached out to say, like, hey, I'm going to be the squeaky wheel here.
So if we do that, I like the idea of a petition, and certainly for that grade level, and certainly for one year only, that's the way I would do it. Then if we have several people ask, it's easy. If, you know, 14 people ask, then we have another problem on our hands. I guess I was working in the impression that it couldn't grow to that size. Is there a way to limit this, and where we're just reaching, because last time we talked with, well, last time I talked with you, I thought it was, there was a couple kids and maybe four open enrollment kids that were really affected. Aren't we just talking about that six? Are we talking about opening this up to anybody who just doesn't want to stay in their school and petition? Now we have to make some judgment calls, if that's what we're asking for, but it seemed like there was a logical handful of kids, like, yeah, you guys are affected this way, that's what I presumed people who were emailing me were talking about making an exception for.
Seems like the logical handful would be Woodview kids that are going to go to Kennedy. Is that, that seems to be
I guess I'm just trying to figure out the difference between six, 10.
Well, I'm just saying six.
What is six and 10? Let's use the real number. Is it two? If those, if my slide is the same as those, there's two.
I guess I still consider.
Currently attending Woodview that are being asked to attend Kennedy.
And I consider the four kids attending Woodview this year in fourth grade who, whether are open enrollment, or who will also be moving to Kennedy, as six kids from the fourth grade class moving to Kennedy for fifth grade. Because when you walk in, you will know five other children, you know, you will know five other kids in that class, or in that grade, as opposed to ten, you walk in and you'll know not, you know, I guess that that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Which four, I'm trying.
The open enrolled.
So what's happening?
The bottom, the bottom number here, the bottom number here is what's changed, so that's, that's where it's gone from four to six, so you've had, you've had six all along, you've had six all along going to Kennedy.
But, but now back to Terry's question, are possible people available to petition would be seventeen, right? The two, the eleven, and the four, or the six? Seventeen or nineteen?
Okay. Well, what about the Kennedy?
Could the GES students going to Woodview?
No.
No, even though there's only ten of them, and maybe, I think, two or three are born, you know, like, you're assuming that they're all great friends, you know? I mean, I'm just saying, ten, if six go from a class, what makes you think any more likely, oh, well, if ten go, then you have friends? Out of forty-two kids, it's thirty-two go to Kennedy and ten are going to Woodview from Grafton Elementary School.
But, but I guess the, the conclusion that was foregone when we closed, you were voted to close GES, was those kids were going to go to other schools.
Well, don't you think it'd be really hard on those students if we do allow Kennedy kids to stay at Kennedy, Woodview kids to stay at Woodview, then you're honestly saying, okay, everyone else can stay at their school, and now ten kids are gonna enter Woodview, if it happened that all the Kennedy kids said, I'd like to stay at Kennedy, I don't wanna move to Woodview, then you're asking ten kids to move from GES into a school where no one's left, everyone else gets to stay, and they are the ten kids in the entire grade. There are no Kennedy kids, it is just ten GES kids put into a class that is one hundred percent Woodview, and if they're separate, you know, you may have two kids, and everyone else knows each other, you're not getting any mixing between schools, you're getting, here are some GES kids, and that was what would happen at Woodview then, because fewer kids are going to Woodview from GES in every grade, and that was what would happen in fifth grade, if given the option that Kennedy, that was our whole point, Kennedy can stay at Kennedy, Woodview can stay at Woodview, then you're saying, because we don't want them to be separated from the friends they've had for the last five years, but for GES, we don't care about those ten kids, they don't get a choice, their school closed, and we're gonna assign them to a school.
Right, so then I will go back to my original proposal to make it easy, it's gotta be four or fewer students, under the theory that, that this was, the comments that were made by the parents that reached out to us was, my son or daughter is one of two, one of a very few, so I would, I would, to, to get around that, I would say, no, this only applies to four or fewer students.
Well, then how do we define four or fewer? Is it, it does not include the open enrolled kids?
Are you just saying four exceptions?
Four or fewer students, so it wouldn't.
Four applications, right?
No, no, four or fewer students, four or fewer students from one school having been asked to transfer to another school.
Right, and then I would say that doesn't apply to anyone, because six kids are being asked to leave Woodview and go to Kennedy in that regard.
It applies to the two at.
It doesn't matter if it's district or open enrolled, what, what you're talking about.
It's students, so it applies to those two students.
And the four then who are being asked to move to Woodview will be asked to leave Woodview and go to Kennedy, and those two will have the option of getting an exception, is that what you're saying?
That's what I'm saying, yeah, to narrowly define.
So those two students, and then the four who will have to, who would go to Kennedy as just the four of them, we're okay with that?
Well, I guess, I don't know about okay with that, I think the thought is, we either just leave it and say, no, this is how it is, which, the ten kids from GES are still going to Woodview, that's not resolved though. The, I, I think, instead of saying, here's the numbers that are affected to make you eligible, we'd rather, we could look at it and say, we're only gonna grant X number of exceptions, whatever school, if you're a Kennedy kid and you wanna, you know, stay, that works, as opposed to saying, it's only these six Woodview kids that are eligible, or whatever, it's only those six kids and the ten kids going from.
Or, I mean, it's only eleven going from Kennedy to Woodview, I'm not saying that Kennedy has a screen.
You wanna stay in your school for this one year in your fifth grade, then go ahead and apply, I think the danger, correct me if I shouldn't say danger, but, it starts to get into a sympathy scale thing, right, and that's really, we discussed that, but, one of the, you know, how are we gonna decide, I mean, whoever, you know, is.
Yeah, I would prefer it be objective, like a lot, like, we would just have, in an Excel doc, and we'd randomize, and that's what it would do.
And then the hard part with that would be.
The sympathy scale's an issue.
Spot, you know, you can end up with, most of my friends were gonna stay, they would have been fine with it, now I got selected, and nobody else that I'm friends with, great, now I, be careful what you wish for.
Well, right, and it's hard to say, you know, no matter how we do it, say we only do it for the two, one may go, what if you can't provide, because I still do not think we should provide transportation, if you choose to, you know, stay at Woodview, I am not a fan of adding any bus stops, because that only makes routes longer, because you, you know what I'm saying? If you choose to stay, you're not in the boundaries, the bus doesn't, I'm really sorry, but the bus doesn't stop for you, because every, you know, if you say, oh, well, I'm really close, okay, well, we'll do it, what if one kid's not close, we provide it for one and not for the other? You would have to provide it for both, and I'm not a big fan of, you know, it is a choice at least, and if you, we wanted to do a lottery system, if you picked it, no, you really, you're on your own for transportation, but that ran into the question of, can we say that, that you're on your own for transportation?
We'll try to discuss.
Will you change your threshold to six, does that answer Carrie's question?
I guess the threshold to me, I can see both points more, so I see it as, if it's six, why not ten, if it's ten, why not eleven, in which case, it almost seems like, we're just trying to decide, we don't even know all those students would want the exception.
And I don't think all of them would.
And then if we said, hey, there's only X number of spots, and then it'll be a lottery, that might also, and you have to provide transportation, that might limit the number of people that even apply, because if there's two people, and I think we just heard one parent said, we're walking distance to Woodview, you know, for the last year, the other one might not be, well, then if you, if you wouldn't need a bus, then you're, you're not really even eligible to apply, because I think that's reasonable, I don't think it's reasonable to ask a district to add a shuttle, to add more buses, that's not.
Or even add a bus stop, I mean, because we have a lot of people who would say, I'm right there, the bus could just stop, you know, who are right on the border almost.
So as soon as you do that, then someone else is right there, next to that bus stop.
The more you move it out.
So Paul, with your number though, I mean, I think the administration needs to know, there is some swing in these class sizes, there's, we're able to move ten kids, you know, what's that number that we could have switch from Woodview to Kennedy, you know, there's gotta be that number that gets to be.
I guess, I'm just thinking, why not open it up, there's ten, a total of twenty-seven at best, and I, I would just, I know for a fact, not everyone would request that for various reasons. You know, would say, no, I, I'm actually really excited to move, or no, I'm, that's my plan is to move, I'm gonna take the transportation and go to whatever school you told me to go to.
And your twenty-seven is which numbers?
I would say almost twenty-two, the ten who are going from Grafton Elementary to Woodview.
Okay.
The eleven going from Kennedy Elementary to Woodview.
Okay.
And the either two, if you wanna say just resident students, or six, but then you would have to open it up to the two Kennedy, which they're staying at their own school, so that's why I didn't include them, I would say six, because if you, if you're a Woodview student, and you're assigned to Woodview, I would say, no, you can't petition to leave Woodview, you are, you know, no, you will be assigned to Woodview next year, you've been there the whole time, and we have no reason to think that you would need to switch schools. And same thing for Kennedy, if you were at Kennedy since all along, then you are going to continue at Kennedy, if, and you do not have the option to say, I'd like to go to Woodview now.
So you would limit the petition to those.
Those small groups of fifth grade who, I'm picking the ten, because it's a small group, eleven and six, and all the rest, you have, what is it, forty-three from Woodview, so all forty-three would have to stay at Woodview, and Kennedy is thirty-two, and yes, all thirty-two who are at Kennedy and are scheduled to stay at Kennedy would have to stay at Kennedy.
But under that scenario, do GES transferees get the right to petition?
The ten, the small group, not, because there's already thirty, there's thirty, oh, thirty-two of them are going to Kennedy.
Right.
So since the majority of your class is going there, no, you're going with the majority of your class, it's not a small group in my mind, thirty-two is a good portion of your class.
So, a next step could be, we could, if we were to take your parameters, we could craft a survey that we could send to the twenty-one, the twenty-five people, because I agree that the two that are at Kennedy is open enrolled, wouldn't be part of that, at those twenty-five, we could, maybe at the January board meeting, bring that information back without giving names, like, we could create a document that would say how many people would be interested in that, and this is what it would do to class sizes, and the board could look at that in an objective way.
Right, because for all we know, maybe it's only, really it is, it's two and one or something.
Not twenty-six.
Sure, you know, Woodview.
Twenty-five, it might be, if it's twenty, and they all chose one school, if it's twenty and ten chose one, and ten chose another, then you're back at the same number.
Right.
But that, that'd give you some, and I think with holidays and everything else, you could give a January deadline, we could send us, we could create a Google Doc that would easily, they could check one of them, we can send it out, we could do a follow-up voicemail, we could do a couple different reminders.
It's a survey, the purpose of which is to gather data for the board to determine interest from those wishing perhaps to move to another location.
Besides what was assigned at the letter that was passed, that was delivered on blank date.
And that survey is only gonna, do we explain to the other thirty-two, the families of thirty-two students at Grafton Elementary assigned to GES, why they didn't get the letter? Because their class is big enough, or that group is big enough, that just?
Yes, I mean, you can, yes, because thirty-two of you are going to Kennedy, we feel that since the majority of your class is going, that you don't have a claim to say that you feel like it's a small, you know, you have a good hope that if two-thirds of your class are going, that you will have a friend.
Yeah, we wouldn't, the survey would only be sent to those, in my mind, the survey would only be sent to the people that we're looking for data from.
And then saying.
We want us to send a different email or a letter than we do that, but like, the survey itself would only go to those people.
But also stating, because it's gonna limit if those twenty-five, if twenty of them have younger siblings, then that, I can't imagine, I guess it would leave it up to them to say, sure, I'm willing to take my fifth grader for one year to go to two schools, you know, one will take the bus that they take anyway, and I'll drive the other one because it's the last year, the other one, they're in first grade, you know, at some point, there's gotta be a cutoff. Or else we don't have new boundaries until everyone who currently has kids, or is done having children, and they're all through our system.
But I think that letter has to make that clear.
Yeah.
The board is considering this transitional method for one year, not to confuse people that they believe, well, this now applies to all of my kids.
And the transportation piece.
You get all the parameters now, no bus, extra busing, no shuttles, no siblings.
Right.
Right, I can bring back data for you, because it appears that we're gonna be stuck on a finite number, that may or may not be accurate or relevant, but possibly bringing back some data for you that would just put, similar to that spreadsheet there, that would just say, these people are interested, these people are staying, this is what the number is, if we accepted all of them, this would be, are you comfortable with these class sizes?
And you're saying the data after a survey, or an email, or letters sent to the parents, and they say, I'm interested, or no?
Yeah, and that's, I think, at the January board meeting, I just think it'd be hard, you know, one of our next topics is a December board meeting, so I think there's just a quick turnaround timeline, and then, you know, with things going on, I think giving an extended period of time, letting people fill it out, we could do a follow-up reminder to people, and try and get a hundred percent participation. So, so why don't we make sure that we have the parameters, when I say we, I mean Kara, let's make sure we have the parameters that you would like as we follow, so Kara, can you?
Well, I, that the survey would go to the twenty-five students, which is the ten who are being moved from GES to Woodview, the four that are being moved from Woodview to Kennedy, and the eleven that are being moved from Kennedy to Woodview.
Isn't there six from Woodview?
Because there's, there's, while.
But there are all the rest.
There's already two, there was, remember, there was already two that were at Kennedy that were open enrolled, so there's, two of that six are already currently attending Kennedy, so, so she's right, so it's four, okay, so that's good, they have that.
That would be a transitional for one year, it would not apply to siblings, there would be no extra busing stops or shuttles.
Anything else to add? Okay. All right, good, we'll revisit it.
Okay, Jeff, catastrophic leave for staff handbook.
Yes, so, last, I'll say it was last month, we had a staff member at, at the middle school come down with a, be diagnosed with a significant illness, and so some staff members had, gone to Mr. Dearing, asking if there was an opportunity for them to be able to donate some days to this staff member, and Mr. Dearing contacted myself, I sort of told her, we do not have a policy in our, in our handbook, so when we say like, catastrophic leave policy, this isn't a policy that goes in our board policies, this is for the faculty, the staff handbook is what it would be looking at going into, and so, we did not have anything in our handbook that would allow people to donate days, Topher and I reached out to other districts, Carrie did some research for us as well, pulled some ideas together, there are very few districts in our area that have anything for staff, one of the things that we talk a lot about is attracting high-quality staff, we also have a retaining high-quality staff, and in a situation where a staff member comes down with a significant illness, significant diagnosis that is, could be terminal, or is in a catastrophic accident like what just occurred on Wednesday, the idea of being able to help staff members who maybe have just started here, so staff members, they get seven sick days a year and three personal days, so they get ten days, you can accumulate sixty days of sick leave, and basically that's to help you get to long-term visibility, and then after sixty days, you, long-term visibility kicks in. So the, after looking at various policies, the policy that we have brought forward to the policy committee was for us to be able to allow staff members that are experiencing financial hardship as a result of exhausted paid leave due to life-threatening and/or catastrophic illness or injury in excess of four weeks, making it be, and concurrently with FMLA, it would allow staff members to, employees to voluntarily donate personal leave time to employees who've been granted either continuous or intermittent unpaid leave, so it could be for someone who is out for a continuous leave, it could be for someone who's diagnosed with an illness that requires treatment throughout the school year, and so it's intermittent, so it's a couple days, three, four days at a time, and that person will run out of sick leave days and personal leave days. The request to use the leave would make the superintendent, who would approve or deny, if a situation is where someone is not able to make the request due to their medical condition, we would be able to grant them that. So you can see the eligible recipients, employee must be on an approved, unpaid medical leave absence, be absent due to catastrophic illness or injury for which medical documentation is provided and is required to return to work when medically able and released, have exhausted or is expected to exhaust all available paid leave days, and not be receiving workers' compensation or long-term visibility benefits. So we go into how we would solicit that information, once it's granted, we would inform employees of the same or higher job classification, so this would really truly be for all of our employees across the district, but it would require people that had that same job classification or higher would be eligible to donate to that employee, it would be accumulated, they could be donated and accumulate up to forty days, and the logic of using forty days, all that Topher eloquently articulated, why we chose forty, it wasn't a random number.
Sure, so, at, after sixty days of being. So at, after 60 days of being out, essentially long-term disability will kick in, and that replaces 2/3 of your income. So by allowing an employee to receive donations to bring them up to that 40 days of sick leave, that they can use during the 60 that they would be out, that essentially is allowing them to replace 2/3 of their income in a lead-up to long-term disability.
So then you can see that the donated leave would be used as sick leave for this illness or injury, and we pay at the receiving employee's rate. So if it's a, it's a staff member and administrator donates, or a staff member who's, you know, in her first year of teaching versus someone who's in his 20th year of teaching, it wouldn't matter, it'd be at that, that receiving employee's daily rate. They're used in the order they're received, and once the maximum leave use has been donated, no more donations will be accepted. Once donated, the personal leave days will no longer be available for use by the employee donating the leave, even if the donated days are not used. We will inform staff for, of the opportunity to donate one time, and then the opportunity to donate will not exceed 30 days. There's a window of time for them to go do this. So we presented this to the finance committee. Finance committee made some suggestions and...
Policy committee.
Excuse me, a policy committee. Thank you. Sorry. The policy committee, the strike-throughs that we see here are the ones that the policy committee asked us to make changes to and bring back to the full board.
The third eligibility requirement says they have exhausted or are expected to exhaust. So if they have exhausted, it makes sense to, you know, accept donations. If they're expected to exhaust, just from a practical perspective, do you then say, okay, looks like your treatment's going to be 30 days, you only have 10 days, we'll accept donations for 20 of those days? And then if they make a dramatic recovery in eight days, are those 20 days that were donated not, are they just burned up and not, and, you know, glad you're better, but no one gets their donated days back? Or do we just make that, once they have exhausted, it was, you know? What I don't want to do is find out someone makes a, you know, a quick recovery and thought we were going to exhaust them all, but we didn't. But now a bunch of people donated something and they are penalized for this person having recovered quicker than they thought. Could we word that in a way so that doesn't happen?
Did that get into the tracking back?
Yeah. This was a discussion we had at the policy committee, is this, the tracking piece, the idea of giving, the idea of giving something, though, is that I'm giving something, not in return for something or hoping I get it back. And the idea of this policy is that it's really for the, and it isn't even, so if the board would have passed this tonight, it isn't that the staff member who the question was asked about, that that immediately happens. That teacher has to request that. So they would be able to know, this is how many days I have, this is what I'm expecting, and I could request more, but they may not need more. That's up to them to request that. In a situation where someone is unable to request it, then that's a different piece that would go with that.
Right. Did we discuss that at the, was that discussed at the power, like, I mean, we potentially have that right now, where if this was in place, it could be your discretion or the district's discretion to say, you know, if you're at a catastrophic accident, it's going to be 30 days.
Right. Yes. That's correct. So we would know that, and we would know, right. And we would know, in the catastrophic piece, we would know how many days they have, we would know that the max is to get to 40, so we would know how many to accept in that way.
Understood. But you're also talking about a situation where they might be having therapy for three, four days, you know, and, you know, we might be dragging this out for a year because there's a treatment, and it's like, well, we think we're going to need 30 by the end of the year. I don't know, I guess, I get it. I understand the idea we don't want to, you know, if you're giving something, you don't, they're not expecting something in return. But I also wouldn't have, if we're trying to anticipate that they're expected to exhaust, I would just like to be pretty clear, hey, they need this, let's donate. If they didn't use them all, okay, but it just seems like if we, it makes sense to word that in a way that isn't like, well, you're expected to, what if you don't? I don't know. Maybe it's okay because it's probably hardly ever happens anyway, in a case like right now, we know what, they will have exhausted.
Well, it'd be a difficult situation for, so if you were to, if this were to occur and someone were to say, well, you know, I have 12 days, I have 11 days, I have 13 days, I want to get to 40. But then when is the timeline of them saying, so is it like at the end of May where they say, oh, you know, I didn't need those days? And then we're going to go back through our accounting and see, okay, who donated when? And which one did we use? How many did they use? And go back through that, and then we're going to, then we're going to retroactively say, oh, like, here, I mean, like, that, that, I don't, it doesn't seem like that's an efficient use of time. And we're trying to help someone who's in a, it's for extremely serious illnesses or catastrophic injuries.
I suppose there's no restriction on when you apply. You can apply, like, if you get right up to the end, it's like, oh, my gosh, I got two more weeks that I need. You can apply then, it's not like, well, shoot, I guess if you had applied earlier, you might have got the days covered. You can give, you can apply them retrospectively, I presume, if you tried to get to the end of your, so then that would, that would answer that.
That's what I'm saying. Except that, we would, we would share this policy with our, with our entire staff, and then if they have any questions, follow up with us. But if someone were to, in the future, if there was someone who'd become sick or ill or have an injury, then the principals could immediately refer, well, if you're interested in this or you need this. Because principals don't know how many sick days are accumulated for staff or personal days. That's something that staff members know and HR knows. So, but they could refer them to the policy as, here's a, here's a way for us to help. And that would also allow staff, because we were figuring out that with using personal leave days, if everyone has three, there's approximately 500, there'd be approximately 500 personal leave days that would be available, that could be donated for an employee to get to that 40. You know, if they only had 10, they'd have 30, if they had 20, like, for 20, like, that goes with it. And obviously not everyone could donate because they may already have their, their personal leave days planned out. But you're trying to help someone in that way as an option.
I would agree. But to Terry's comment, and absent any administrative method to track it, we do make reference, once donated, the personal leave days will no longer be available for use by the employee donating. It wouldn't hurt to add a sentence after that sentence that said, donated leave to be used by recipient only for catastrophic illness or injury as identified in item number two above. Whether you track it or not, it just sets the expectation of the recipient that if they are suddenly cured, whatever, that, you know, they really ought not be using those days.
Well, I would hope that no staff member who suddenly got healed would just, you know, take personal days that their own teachers had donated and go on vacation or something. I mean...
Why wouldn't they? Who would know? They would be available to them. There'd be no, I mean, this sets an expectation both for the person donating and for the recipient.
I think what you're saying is, once they return from that catastrophic leave, then any of donated that wasn't used no longer becomes available because the catastrophic leave is over.
Right. Whether you track it or not, I mean, to some degree, it's on the honor system. I'm just saying, in typical contract language, if there is language to the donor, there should be language to the recipient. It's not unreasonable for there to be language for the recipient.
Right, I guess I'm just assuming that when the teacher makes the request, they're looking at their days and being honest about how many they think they're going to need. It would never overest, you know, be like, oh, I'll overestimate and take extra and go somewhere.
No. I guess I don't see it as an honest, dishonest, the next year they'd get more vacation.
Correct. They'll get an allocation.
You get three personal days, you get three.
Yeah, so they'd get three the next year. Well, is that, is that the three that were donated then, or is that, do you, how long are those good?
I'm just saying, it's not unreasonable in contract language to see those sides presented.
Because how long would you carry over? Again, I hear this came up.
Well, they, you get, so sick leave carries over from year to year until you reach your maximum sick leave.
Right.
Personal days do not, but any unused personal days then become sick days.
So, I mean, those donated days, in theory, whether it was miraculous healing or not, could still be there for years.
If, if that's the intent of the board. You want to see those still available for the person they were donated to? Or, or do you want to say, well, that was donated for use for this catastrophic leave?
For that time.
And if you come back, then, then those don't exist anymore, those aren't available?
Well, I think they still need to be partially available, because, I mean, there could be therapy, there could be other things for the remainder of the school year that would, part of the reason why it was donated, with Kara explaining not to go on vacation, or, you know what I mean? But if it's still needed, once you come back to work for certain...
And these are, these are, these become sick days. So no one should be taking vacation.
But to answer your question, I would feel that, you know, they're, they apply to this particular illness, injury, whatever, and when that is resolved, whatever's left over doesn't get used by anybody, the donor, the donor or the donee, like Paul's saying, they don't carry over to next year, they're just used for this task. And if you don't use them all, good, you got better faster than you thought, but nobody gets a benefit out of having extra days donated.
And I, I'm not sure that you track it, you're just setting expectation.
And a lot of this really according to how this is written, the first line of the second paragraph, you know, who, the superintendent, who will approve or deny the request?
It's catastrophic. It's, it's not going to be, I'm out on maternity leave and I didn't have enough, or maternity leave and I ran out of days. I mean, that's, that's not what this is for. This is for...
Potentially two cases right now. It would be nice to be able to help those.
That's correct. It is written that it's paid for this illness or injury, it doesn't carry over to anything else other than treatment.
Well, that's where adding the language that Paul suggested, I think would be beneficial, if he wants to clearly delineate that focus.
Sure.
Did you write it down?
I wrote it down. Question is, can I read it tomorrow? Yeah. I can email that to you.
I have most of it.
We're looking forward on this tonight, though, right?
We are. So I think we've got to make sure everyone's in agreement, because I'd like you to, I would like to have this be a...
Be done with it.
Some movement on this, if possible.
So let's read the sentence back if you have it, Kara.
So this would come, this would be the second, would follow, even if the donated days are not used, then it would say, donated leave to only be used by recipient for catastrophic illness or injury as described in number two above.
Because it says donated potentially may be used as sick leave for this illness or injury. I mean, it really is written there, right?
Where does it say that?
In the middle of the big paragraph, last paragraph, in red, underlined.
It does say, yeah.
So it might just be redundant to say that, because it raises...
Would you want to put in, an only in that sentence instead of...
May only be used, because I...
Will only be...
Maybe use this to be only for this illness or injury.
Sure.
Okay.
Yep, that's a better, it is there. Right. Okay, with that, one modification, I think we're only, or Kara just read it.
I'll make a motion to approve the catastrophic leave policy. Second.
I just have one further clarification. Is this a handbook edition policy?
We would, we would, when we look at our handbook, we would be looking at section eight, benefits applicable to all employees, and we would have that be the first bullet under the benefits applicable to all employees. So it would not be a separate...
So it's, this isn't a board policy?
This is not a board policy. This is a, this is administrative guidelines for all staff that we have to all staff.
Right. Good.
It's housed in our handbook.
Make a motion to approve administrative policy, or administrat, for the handbook.
Yes, yes, for the staff handbook.
Second.
Any further questions or clarifications? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and it passes. Okay, uh, now we've got, you want to do the D and E after aye, so you want to talk about meeting dates first?
Please. So currently, our board is scheduled to meet on, the fourth Monday of the month is Monday, December 25th. And so we would recommend that we look at the 11th, Monday, the 11th, which is our typical committee date that we have reserved for our staff committees, and to move our December board meeting to December 11th. And cancel the, the December 25th meeting.
Do you want a motion for that? Anyone nods?
Yeah, I don't think you need a motion. As long as you say it's okay to do it.
Yeah. Okay. Then D and E.
Yeah, I wonder about, hey, Dana, what if we switch to, since we're moving, you can surround. Why don't we go, can we go to new course approvals and let staff that are here then leave? Or do you have everyone here?
Lori's not here.
Oh, okay. We're in.
We can start with high school.
Yeah, you want to start with high school at least, instead of making them, I'm sure this is written. Actually is.
Yeah.
No, written even.
See if you say that at nine o'clock, right? Is that interesting?
I just wanted to, to thank the teachers. They've come up with some great proposals for this year, worked very hard on them diligently through the revision process. We have one proposal for the middle school, which we'll do after the high school, and four, or three for the high school. So I'm going to turn it over to Scott for a minute, and he'll introduce everybody. And then we do have, in addition to this, some course name changes that Scott will talk about after we go through the new courses. Thanks again to the teachers for your hard work.
We are very excited about the three new course proposals, which will be put in front of you tonight for Grafton High School. We have a group of teachers that have worked hard on bringing these proposals forward to you, and each want to take just a couple of minutes of your time to talk a little bit about their course. And we have, we'll have one from the world language area, one from physical education, and one from our social studies department. So we're just going to take them in order as they're listed. So we'll have Karen Frye talk about her AP German 5 course. Karen, come on up.
Hey, very short. So the German program is growing at Grafton High School, and offering German 5 as an AP class acknowledges the rigor of advanced world language courses. And in addition, they can already earn college credit for German 5. I think adding that AP designation will encourage more of the students to stay with German 5 all five years. I'm going to show. That's it.
So no cost to the district, which is, which is always excellent.
I'm going to cheap.
And I think it's just, I think it's a great proposal. I think it gets the AP designation on student transcripts, it rewards them for their hard work and for completing our capstone course within our German program, so.
Is it a one semester class, or you take it in conjunction with four?
It's for a year. So they have to have German 1, 2, 3, and 4. And we already have German 5. So it's a whole year course, it's AP, yeah.
I'm sorry, I just am not familiar. They're all one-year courses, right?
Yes.
So you can take German 1 as an eighth grader somewhere?
Yes. If you took it as an eighth grader.
Okay, got it.
Then they start German 2, yeah.
How many, how many students are in German 4?
Right now, I have five. Right. But we have to remember, when I started here, there were only 36 students in all the levels. And I have more than 90 just at the high school, not counting 6th, 7th, and 8th grade. So that's triple from when I started here, four years ago, that's already triple, that's a lot for a small high school. So as they're, as they're understanding, and the parents are the ones who are really excited about German 5, either AP or college credit, I encourage them, yeah.
That's great.
So we feel that over time, we'll have more students that'll have the opportunity to be able to take this and have a great capstone course on their transcript. Next on the list, we have Mr. Mike Weldon, who will introduce the physical education proposal.
Hello. Again, I'm Mike Weldon. The course I wanted to try to get through this year is officiating. It's something where I look at the schools around here, we're always talking about kind of comparing ourselves to other schools. It's not something that I even offer. It's something that Port Washington tried to offer four or five years ago. They weren't able to get the students enrolled in it, they just didn't have the numbers of kids who were interested, and it kind of just went away and they took it out of their handbook. This is something that just from talking to students in class, they seem interested in. Not only that, talking to the local people who do all the refereeing around here and the officiating, our community in general is in dire needs of young referees. And this course will allow them to get WIA certified throughout the course. And that's why there's a $35 course fee to it, because that's the exact fee that WIA charges to get certified in whatever sport they choose to in that course. Yes, they'd learn how to do volleyball and basketball, but if they really want to do baseball, that's the one that they would take their test in. All the students in the course would of course learn down, learn with them and go through it. So if they weren't planning on doing anything but volleyball or soccer, they might go, you know, actually I, I really found I really like basketball. I want to actually get certified in this. And the thing that I've been working with, uh, local community members with is, as soon as they take the course, they get certified and they register with those Aki County officiating crews, they'll refund that $35 that they paid for the course back to them. As more of an initiative to get more young people interested in refereeing. Because if anyone's ever been to, you know, U Sports, you see the same referees, same at high school, over and over and over, and eventually those people are going to stop doing, there's not going to be anyone left to ref. So that's why they were really, really big on as soon as they take the course and they pass the exam, that they would come back and issue them that check for $30 that they paid for the course itself. We're hoping for at least this semester, we need about 20, 25 students to run the course correctly, just from the teachers I've talked around the state that run at their high school. And it wouldn't only just be playing the games and practicing refereeing. It'd be breaking down film. Great opportunity to work some team building things in there because, again, if you've been to U Sports, anything, that's a high stress situation where you're going to have people who might be yelling at you. Might be in a conflicted situation, but it's a really good chance for them to get to work on those leadership skills that they not only need to be a referee, but they'll use later on in life. So we're excited about the course, and that's it.
So just add as an elect, we have an elective-based PE department following the freshman year.
Yep.
So this just adds an elective opportunity for our students to take. I think, I, I feel like it has the opportunity to fill a community void and really help with the long-term sustainability of officials within our community. So we have some initial interest from kids, so we'll just, we'd like to run it and see what kind of, kind of sign up we get. And once again, it's a pretty low-cost option to be able to make something like this happen for our community.
If one of the students gets a WIA designation, where would you anticipate that student entering the officiating realm? Like JV, freshman, club?
I mean, you can't, or you cannot ref anything older than your, your age group because you have to do like a year below. Like, most of our students who would do it, who I have the most interest from right now, is mostly soccer. So if you're U 15, you can ref U 14. They wouldn't be allowed to come in right away, but if they get the experience in class, they're going to be much more confident to be able to go and ref some type of soccer game or basketball, or wherever it might be, starting at the youth level. And then hopefully they build up that experience, they build up their knowledge of the sport and feel more comfortable by the time they graduate as an 18-year-old. Now they can jump right back in and they can start doing freshman games, JV games, and building up the amount of referees we have in the system in this area.
There's a ton of youth averaging. I mean, I'm thinking baseball and all.
And honestly, the, the money that they make is really, really, really good compared to a lot of the other opportunities most high school students and even young adults have, where if they get into it, yeah, it's a lot of work, but they seem to enjoy it and they can, it's a pretty good side job.
And it can continue into college?
Yes.
That's what I was going to say. I, I think, where do the standards come from? The standards in alignment in here? Because I think we do have to...
Uh, these are just all the state national standards we dropped from. I think the, just drawing back through my notes here, the biggest thing where it's going to come from is standard, standard three, where students are making conscious decisions to engage in physical activity on their own regard, where they're staying active. Doesn't mean they're always at form and fitness, doesn't mean they're always at the Y, but you're refereeing a sport, you have to be active through that. If you don't have the capabilities to be active, you know, you're going to have to almost get back in shape just to be able to ref some of those activities.
But I, I do like the idea of, you know, the conflict resolution and the management and the game management and the leadership principles that this course would bring about.
From the people I talked to, especially at Washington North, they've run a pretty successful course. They do it both semesters, a little bigger school, but they work a lot of team building activities, a lot of leadership-type things in, because that's what, he said he initially didn't do right away, but he found that was one of the biggest things that those type of students going into refereeing in a leadership position were lacking. Yes, they knew the game, they knew the rules, they knew what a foul was, but when they put in those situations in front of all sorts of adults and people who are, they're barely older of, they have to be able to, you know, carry themselves with poise and do all those things in order to function as a ref. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Weldon. And our third proposal that we have for you is from the social studies department. We have advanced placement human geography on the table for you tonight. Mr. Ryan Brolman will talk to you about AP human geography.
All right, so, yeah, our course that we'd like is a, is a ninth grade elective or advanced placement human geography. And I kind of like what Mr. Weldon was saying also. Actually, it's been the last couple of years, we've started to look at this comparatively to other school districts and what they've done. And then actually the big kind of push was also our middle school, a couple of years ago, added the...
Historical inquiry.
Pardon?
Historical inquiry.
Yeah, the inquiry, the historically inquiry class. So we kind of saw there was a little bit of a lull between eighth grade and then our sophomore year, in which we had AP US history. So started to look at it, and then we started to contact the schools around here in the districts, and most of the schools have offered the advanced placement human geography class the last couple of years. So kind of looked at that. We also, we had talked about adding a little more of a world cultural idea. And then this class just seemed to really, really fit in that, that idea, to have our students with more rigorous inquiry-based class, looking at primary documents, just a ton of different things. And this definitely seemed to fit as being the, the class that we really looked forward to. So the goal again to start is next year, hopefully with one class. We'll start by looking at those, the students that are in the eighth grade, eighth grade class also, and then kind of go from there.
Okay.
Good.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thanks, Mr. Weldon.
Thank you.
Logitarian impact, that would come out of the textbook budget?
Yeah, so Diana, you want to talk about the budgetary impact that you, that we take on for all these?
Wait, one more course?
I know, he's, but he asked, it would be relevant to all of them.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
The bud, this would come out of the, the textbook budget?
So, so it comes out of the teaching and learning budget. There's some parts of it that come out of the textbook and some out of professional development. So for example, in Ryan's course, there's the AP training. So that is a cost that the budget takes on, and then the, you know, so in his case, it's about a $8,700 impact.
But these are not adders to what was put in the budget?
No, they're, they're already in. Current budget, and they have to prioritize and shift things around each year.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
At the middle school, I'm here to introduce Lori Mathias, our business and information technology teacher. We are revamping and I guess upgrading our current sixth grade course, which is keyboarding. And Lori's here to talk about how we're going to change that into digital communications one at the sixth grade level. This is a course that all sixth graders will take as part of their will. Lori Mathias?
All right. Thank you, good evening, everybody. Have to apologize for my voice ahead of time. It's actually better that I do have this mic here because I had a cold last week and totally lost it on Thursday, so hopefully it's back pretty good. But again, as Kevin indicated, you have a replacement course in front of you for the sixth grade in the business and information technology department called digital communications one. And you can see this course will continue to be part of the sixth grade rotation, which will be a nine-week course. Every student will be taking this. In looking at the current and future skills needed, there's a vast list of digital literacy skills that all students need to be successful in utilizing not in all their courses as they continue on throughout high school, middle school and high school, but as they prepare for college and career readiness. Now for the content of this course, we've identified standards that'll be covered and assessed in student proficiency, obviously from the business and information technology standards. But you can see also the ISTI, which are the International Society for Technology Education Standards, and the Common Core. Some of the skills currently covered in the seventh grade class will be brought down to the sixth grade class, the digital communications class, so they can use the technology and the digital literacy skills earlier in their other classes, such as preparing multimedia presentations is one thing that, instead of waiting that until seventh grade, we'll make sure we bring that down into sixth grade. You will also note that in the overall goals of the course, how communication and problem solving, two very important soft skills are going to be emphasized. And if you really take a look at the rationale, you can see how all of it will come together to benefit all the students. Finally, if you take a look at the budget section and the items under additional comments, the items listed can and will be used also for the seventh and eighth grade courses. So any funds approved will benefit more than just in the sixth grade course, all students in seventh and eighth grade. Okay? Any questions?
Okay, thank you, Lori.
You bet.
Thanks, Kevin. So is that it? We need, do you have any other questions?
We have some name changes. I don't know if those have to be separate.
Should we just...
All right, so a couple of things for you under course name changes, and also course removal from our course book. So each year as we approach scheduling for the next school year, we go through our course book again, and we take a look at, are the names servicing us well? Are there any courses where we, which have not run a significant amount of time? And should we look at removing them from our offering? So we have two of those things that we're going through tonight. The majority of these are within business and information technology. We have one from physical education. So the course name changes that we are proposing are quite honestly to give students a better idea of what's really happening within the course. So we are looking at computer applications and changing that to computer applications for college and careers. And Sandy Giuliani certainly had suggested that as having students understand that we're looking more at some of the upper-level applications in that, in that course. Multimedia, looking to get more specific into digital video design. So just letting them know that's actually what we're working on throughout, in that course. And Mr. Weldon, it was called individual sports and net games, but it's really net games and individual sports are secondary. So kids are getting confused when they're signing up for that course. We're just going to flip that title and make sure everybody understands what that, what's the priority in that course. As far as course removal is concerned, what you see, what I, what I wrote in the memo to you is that the courses set for removal have not been run since the 2013-14 school year. The content in keyboarding and Google Docs basically is now introduced to students far earlier, and students don't sign up for it because there's not a need to take it here really any longer at high school. And our upper-level at computer applications courses really address the Microsoft products, which are still industry standard overall. So we're still, have opportunity for students to, to work with those applications. And then business enterprise and sales, and business enterprise and advertising are just too specific of courses. We can take the advertising and the sales components and move those into a course such as sports and entertainment management, where they can still talk about advertising and sales. And that's in addition to our accounting and our personal finance courses that we still have in the realm of our business education. Having courses as specific as that make it very, very difficult for them to run, and they have not run for an extended period of time. So this would help to clean up the course book, to present a more polished look for our business and information technology offerings, and hopefully gain additional enrollment or greater enrollment in some of those courses versus only having three, four, five students sign up for some of these courses which are just, which we're no longer running. So, so we'd ask for your approval for those name changes and for the, and the removal.
I have a question about, you said you, the sales and marketing aspect of, was that of that class be shifted to other classes, namely sports and entertainment, marketing, and that sort of thing? Is that...
So sports and entertainment management is, and Sandy, you can feel free to weigh on this as well. Sports and entertainment management is one of our more popular courses. So we have students, a good number of students sign up for that class. So we can take some of the concepts of sales and concepts of advertising, and they can be taught within a basic business course such as sports and entertainment management. Okay? Sandy, would you like to expand on that a little bit?
Back many moons ago, those two courses, the sales and advertising, were our marketing one course. So we broke that apart quite a while ago to make it two separate courses when it made sense. Now there's, there was two instructors at that time. Now there's just one, and it doesn't make sense anymore. So I moved a lot of the concepts into other courses to still retain a marketing flavor, but we, we lost our marketing instructor who could do a full-fledged course in those areas.
Yeah, and my question is, is mostly, it seems like sales and advertising kind of transcends a lot of barriers in terms of jobs. It'd be applicable in almost anything you can do. But if you throw all that into sports and entertainment management, it seems like people might not think, well, I need, I need to get some sales experience, but I don't want to do sports and entertainment. As long as it's in those other business classes too, I'm just not sure where it's all going to land. Or does it land in each of those equally, or?
The four, the four Ps of marketing would fall under promotion, pricing, product, and placement. That is covered in sports and entertainment management, and the sales and advertising are, are two of those four Ps. So is it covered as well and in depth? No, not, not anymore. But it is still covered in, in that course.
Okay, in that course, but not others. That particular, those curriculum pieces wouldn't be in any other business course where someone's like, I want to go into business, I need to know some sales, but unless I do sports and entertainment, I'm not going to get any of the four Ps, or those two of the four Ps?
Well, you might get some advertising and desktop publishing, you know, I mean, in a facet like that, you might get some promotion and the digital video design, but not as a separate component of the marketing process. We kind of lost a great deal of that when we lost the second business teacher. So bring that person back and then we'll go full-fledged again.
Well, we're trying to stream, we're trying to streamline the course book. And right now we're in a spot where we offer, there are too many offerings, and as a result, when students sign up, we end up with, you know, a smattering of students in different areas in terms of courses that we can't end up running. So what we're trying to do is really streamline that process and make sure that we have students that are signing up, and that we can get them this type of material by running those courses. Otherwise, they don't get the material at all because we're not running the, running the course.
We had two students in sales and I think three in advertising sign up last January. So there's 15 courses still on the books from two teachers. It has to be condensed somehow.
But I guess what you're saying is, are we sure that the key principles from each of those individually are now covered either individually or collectively in the remaining course offering? And we're confident that they are?
All right, so Sandy, are you confident that those principles of sales and advertising would still be covered within our business education program?
They still exist, and Lori does some of that at the eighth grade level, of course, too. Now, as, as we're bumping stuff down, that's what we're trying to do is to, you know, bring a higher level of content to the lower grades as well. So we work well together to try to articulate that. So she is starting earlier at the eighth grade level in her class as well. Is it covered as in depth? No, I, I can't say that that happens. But is it still covered? Yes.
And my question partly that, but not, but also the notion that sales and advertising, that's a business, those are some business skills you have to have. If you're going to go on a business track, you might be thinking, well, I don't really, I'm not interested in sports and entertainment. It, it seems like those things are critical to be in those more, those classes that have more broader interests. And I might be wrong. Maybe there are more kids, I would think more kids are going into these business tracks, and that has to be a piece of those business. So I'd like to be sure that it ends up there because sports and entertainment management seems so narrowed and, you know, you'd be pigeonholed in it something you might not be interested in at all. Oh, you never got the sales and advertising then, you know? That's what I'm thinking, but...
Sure.
But I see what you're saying, you know, streamlined, because like the way it is now, people just don't get it at all because we don't have, we don't even run the class.
That's right. I mean, we, and you know, and the elective departments are driven by student enrollment, you know? So we need to make sure we're meeting student needs, and I think we're doing that, but I also think that we're, we're, we're spreading things out too much to where Sandy is one, she is one person, you know, and she's teaching a different class every single period of the day. So how can we make sure that, to your point, that we're teaching those concepts? But certainly we may, we may lose a little bit of depth in that matter, and that's a reality. Just, that's just honest, let's be honest about it.
But it, but it gets to the point that I think Ryan was talking about earlier when he talked about them looking at, trying to add a flavor of something to their curriculum that was, I think he said world, more world-based and not just American-based. And, and that's what they're trying to do here as well, is trying to, like, sort of, and I think maybe the, the next step is like, what do we want to make sure all students have an opportunity to get? What's really important? And I think Kevin's doing that with Lori, looking at sixth grade, like not just saying, well, let's just teach... "Well, let's just teach something that we've been teaching a long time." What do kids need in the future and we want to make sure all kids have it? So, what is that program going to really represent? And you can't be all things to all people and be good at it. And so, by streamlining it, seeing there's an area for potential improvement, here's a way to do that and it's going to be incremental to do that. Because you're right, if people... If you offer an elective, if we offer officiating and five kids sign up for it, this year we don't run it, next year you're going to get three kids to sign up for it. Because they're not going to waste their time signing up for it if it's already getting canceled and then they get stuck with something that if they'd have signed up for it in the front end, they could have had it. So, it's important to have good advertising and marketing to get kids to sign up for it that would go with it.
I would agree with that, but at the same time, if I understood the comments, there once was one course for sales and marketing and that kind of got broken out as we added to staff. And now, we're consolidating because staff has been reduced. But I think we'd be better served, what do kids really want? I mean, if we're offering sports and entertainment management, but more kids really want to just the generals of sales and marketing, maybe we should have a sales and marketing class. I mean, it's like we tailored our course offering based upon our staff. Now, we're moving courses because our staff is reduced. Let's do exactly what you say. Let's find out what do kids really want?
And I think when you move away from... I think probably one of the reasons when you lost the marketing, you couldn't call certain classes, certain things, because you had to have a certain certification in order to offer that. So, that was a certification issue is what my experience would be with that. So, but the idea of saying, "Well, what are those key components?" I think the high school is bringing to the table. But as Scott says, elective classes are driven by enrollment. Like, if more students are taking those classes, then more FTE is brought to the table to do that. If less kids are taking those classes, then less... Karen talks about building German. Well, FTE in German has gone up. That has caused other FTE to go down in other areas because it's driven by student enrollment. It's not a competition. We don't want it to be a competition, but we want to offer things that are... That are seen as being valuable for students to be able to take at the middle school and high school so they're able to make informed choices when they leave our district. And so, it's up to the principals and their staffs to create elective courses or courses that students are interested in, see high value in, and will continue to take for years to come.
How many students do we have in sports and entertainment management?
I have 26 to 27 in this next semester.
So, we need... So, we need... I think we need a...
We have a big...
We need a motion to accept the new courses as well as name changes and removal. Yeah, I think we do one. Can we do one? We're just going in our coursebook.
Do we have a motion of that effect? So moved.
Any further questions or discussion? This is a great discussion because it shows that the curriculum is really... It's fluid. We're adapting to changes. I love to hear that we can't offer stuff now because we're bumping it down to earlier levels. I mean, that's great. I'm not crazy about hearing that we don't have the same depth in some of these things that we used to get it. And maybe that's a discussion for later on. Let's look at the department, look at, you know, should we be doing things differently? You know, what is our philosophy in it? I mean, I'm sort of surprised that we would find that there's classes that you're offering in sales and marketing and business and that stuff where everyone's going to end up someday, but there's not a lot of interest in it. That's going to be very frustrating from your perspective, but if we need a better sales job or we need to show kids more how it's relevant for their future, it seems like it'd be great to have that discussion, maybe bring it back around at some point. Jeff, let's just talk about that. How can we get that word out? But anyway, at least this is showing... I mean, you almost tripled enrollment in German. That's amazing. Honestly, about five years ago, I was talking with a superintendent and then about phasing out German because it's just becoming less relevant. And now, look at what you've done. I mean, that's great. So, it is really great to see how this is... These changes and these discussions are happening, bringing new courses to the table. It's great. Thanks all of you. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And it passes.
Okay.
So, if we can go back to D and E and then come back to J? And I'll turn over D to... D and E, it's over.
All right. So, when we met November 13th as a finance meeting, we discussed the update to our performance contracting that we had investigated since spring. I included a memo in your packet that reviews the information that was presented at that meeting from November 13th. Basically, in spring, we began looking at a performance contract that would take lighting and control projects that were not in the referendum and couple that with some projects that were in our long-term maintenance plan that would knock those off in the future that would be paid for through using our borrowing authority that we have available to us. Up to another, I believe it's 4.2 million that's still left. And it would be budget neutral. That is, it would not increase taxes because it would be within the revenue limit, but it would not impact our instructional budget because the debt payments would be paid for with the energy savings. We did select Train to take a look at that project and they did look at that through the summer and into the fall. The scope of the project changed as we... As fall came around and we had some budget challenges with the referendum. When Hoffman finalized the design, there was square footage that had been added. When we went to the village, they added some requirements that Hoffman had not anticipated or budgeted for. And so, with some of these, also, I would say that the bid environment has appeared to be very challenging as well. Now, with that... With that situation, we asked Train to start looking at some projects that were within the referendum that would have energy savings to them. However, those projects ended up being much simpler in nature and didn't require the expenses that come along with performance contracting and more complicated engineering. So, it made more sense to move away from the performance contracting with Train and rather that we would tackle these on our own, still using that debt authority within the referendum, still having a budget-neutral concept to it. That is, we would not raise taxes, would not increase taxes because it would be within the revenue limit and it would not impact our instructional budget because the cost of the debt payments would be paid for with energy savings. And so, I have included some charts that worked through some of the calculations for this. So, if we look at our projected electricity budget, we take the 1718 budget. If we were moving into 1819 and looking at, say, a 3% increase in our electricity budget without a referendum, it would be about $366,000. However, we've worked with Eden Hunt... Eden Hunt. Mead and Hunt to look at what kind of savings we'd have as a result of the referendum in our electricity budget. So, this does not include heating. This would just be electricity. And you can see with KES and Woodview that we do actually have an increased budget for electricity because we're adding square footage there, we're adding air conditioning. John Wrong Middle School does have some controls included in the referendum, so there'd be some savings there. And then at the high school, we'd see significant savings primarily because of the reduced footprint. And that... In that high school electricity budget, that's actually one budget line that includes the elementary school that will no longer be there for 1819. Now, some of that moves over to the high school, production kitchen maintenance and a gymnasium, but there's significant savings there. So, within the... With the referendum, we're looking at just with electricity, saving an estimated $56,000. Now, if we take that to the next page, we can also see... We can also see that we have budget-saving projections for doing the existing lighting and existing controls not in the referendum. This is that original piece of the performance contracting that we're going to couple with long-term maintenance projects. We're estimating that we will save by doing those lighting and control projects almost $67,000. That coupled with our referendum savings in electricity would save us annually initially over $123,000. Now, we asked Baird to take a look at what we could borrow where the initial payment would match that initial savings while both of them get indexed by 3%. So, the payment on the debt would go up 3% a year with the assumption that the savings that we would realize would also go up 3% of the year, 3% a year because of inflation on electricity costs. That basically brought us to the ability to borrow $2.16 million. Now, the estimated cost of doing the existing lighting and existing controls comes to a little bit over $808,000, which would then make available for lighting and controls that are in the referendum of about $1.35 million. Now, what that allows us to do, it allows us to handle the challenges with the referendum budget that I mentioned earlier. It allows us to maintain some of those updates to learning spaces. I'll use the example, at Woodview, we have those collaboration spaces that we're building into the new spaces. Same with Kennedy. We can keep that... We can keep those because... And with the idea that trying to do that later on, to cut that and do it later on would be cost prohibitive, once we've already built those spaces, to go in and remodel that later. So, we can keep all that in here and it will not increase taxes because, again, this borrowing will occur within the revenue limit and it will also not impact the instructional budget because the payments will be made with energy savings. On the next page in your packet, this is the Bayard financing example and you can see in here, so this is the total projected payment and next to that, the estimated energy savings, again indexed to 3%. This first-year payment right here would be made by using... Because we can't levy for that right now, that would be used... That would be paid for with the energy incentive bonuses that we would get as a result of these projects. So, we are looking at... We're looking to have the board approve the recommendation that was brought forward from the finance committee to go ahead and issue debt for completing these projects. Are there any questions?
How is the existing lighting, the $55,410? How is that number determined? So, that's savings outside of the... So, page one is within the referendum.
So, Faith... Correct. Faith Technology came in and they looked at doing... They looked at replacing the lighting, the older lighting, and upgrading to LED. And so, they have to do calculations in order to receive those incentives and rebates and they had to project what the savings would be on an annual basis with every piece of that... Of that project.
So, how... It's replacing the existing lighting for areas not covered by the referendum?
Correct.
Okay. Just another comment, not as much a question. In looking back through my notes from the referendum presentations, you know, these savings are in fact savings that we represented, available to the district to fund 46, to fund Fund 46. They won't be there to fund Fund 46. Right? I mean, we talked about, you know, the fact that we gain energy efficiencies with newer systems, newer buildings, and those energy efficiencies and those savings would generate excess of revenues over expenses that could be used to fund Fund 46. These will not be there. I just want to make sure that...
Right. This portion of that, because as you said, we're not including gas, we're not including those pieces. We also aren't including streamlining our FTE, whether it's administrative personnel costs that are ongoing, costs that just continue to rise. So, but you are correct. We, as we look at this, that is a... That's the discussion that we've had is that is a loss of a savings that we would have had in order to be able to get all of our existing lighting covered.
And are any of the... What amount of the $808,000 is on the long-term capital maintenance plan?
Not... I don't think much of it. Some of the outdoor lighting would be on there. I don't have a dollar amount. Some of the outdoor lighting and some of the controls would have been in the long term.
I'm estimating both, $400,000.
So, half of that? Okay. Good. I mean, so we're addressing, virtue of this, we're addressing those things that otherwise would have been left out there to be addressed later.
Through Fund 46.
Through Fund 46. Right. No, that's good. Good.
Okay. Any other questions for Tofler?
Are we going to cover the resolution?
No. Even as a general...
All right.
Yes. After you...
So, you want a motion to approve this?
To approve that the board wants to move forward with this concept.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any other questions? Posed in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Proposed. Passes.
All right. When we put out bonds in those bids, I always get a call from Mike Clark at Baird letting me know how the results went. And he had mentioned to me that often with some of these more short-term notes, they may only receive at times one or two bids. So, he actually called me today and said that we did not receive any bids on this. Had very unique situation. He said in the last 20 years, they had not seen that occur. So, we have a couple of options in front of us. First of all, we can... We can put it out to bid again for our December 11th meeting, now that we have a December 11th meeting, and go through that process again. He's expecting that there will be bids based on the fact that we... This hasn't happened, but this once in 20 years. But he also believes that the timing of the holiday season played a role. The information was out there to bidders last week and he feels that perhaps it was overlooked because of the holiday season. So, we could do that. The other option would be to hire a placement agent. So, they would be hired to basically go out and negotiate with banks to buy these notes. Now, that would come with an additional cost. So, what administration is recommending is that we would go with that December 11th attempt to do this again. We would still have the option to use a placement agent if lighting struck twice and we didn't have any bidders on this. And Baird will go out on this second attempt and talk to... The people would typically bid on these and ask, make sure they're aware, ask if there are any questions that they have and maybe reach out and find out why they didn't bid last time to improve the chances that we have to be better. So, we do not have anything for you to approve tonight on this, but we are looking for your guidance on the various options and moving forward. Again, recommending that we make another attempt on December 11th.
Are we running up against a deadline, December 11th?
Yes. So, the... Basically, with a December 11th sale date, we have a closing date of December 21st.
If we don't have a bid, then we're even...
Then we use the placement agents. And it does come with a $5,000 to $7,000 price tag. So, prefer to avoid that.
I don't really know what a placement agent is or does. Are we fairly confident that that gets done by the deadline? that that gets done by the deadline?
That Mike, Mike Clark is confident that we'll, we'll be able to get this done.
Were there other reasons that he cited beyond the holiday?
That was it, coupled with the fact that these often only get one or two bids.
Yeah.
So.
So, you're just looking for guidance, you're not looking for a motion here, you just think they're not, they're on the table, send them forward.
Okay.
The more information, okay.
Well, I think the plan to go out for bid on the 11th makes the most sense.
Yeah.
And that Baird took it up.
Yep.
But I, I do have just some questions for Mike, because in the, the draft resolution that isn't, there's some inconsistency in the maturity date, so let's make sure that they get the same. And then, the Exhibit B, this is the same Exhibit B as we've had in the past, but I just, I'm curious why on the second page, notes becomes plural and hasn't been previously I understand the concept that it, it would be a question that I'd raise to Mike, this is standard documentation.
There may be times where they're discussing the purchaser of a note because they can be bought individually.
Agreed.
Versus maybe characterizations of the notes in general.
Multiple notes, but I would think then throughout the first page, notes would be defined.
I can reach out to Mike.
Yeah, I, I just would ask, it, it was confusing to me. And I'm assuming then that Exhibit B, the name that was in there is, that was CED and Company, that was.
May have come from a previous template.
Yeah, okay, all right, well, that's too bad.
Okay, any other questions? All right, thanks, Topper. So, we're going to go to Jay.
Correct.
Yeah, so state report cards, so on the 17th of November, I'll have Diana come up here, DPI issued their school report cards for all public schools in Wisconsin. So, we have both individual report cards as well as a district report card. So, principals have worked with Diana and Rick to come up with some talking points, both at the district and then also at each building level. And so, we will give you an overview of our report cards.
Okay, so I'm going to start out by looking at the district report card, and then every school will present theirs, and I guess I will take GES.
Please.
Probably not as well as Karen would have, but, okay, so what's included in this report? So, the components, we'll sort of remind everybody what the components are to the report card, and then we'll look at the district one, and then each school will do some highlights. Go ahead, sorry, I don't have a clicker. Okay, so, the priority areas, does it work?
Pointer.
It's at least a pointer?
Yeah.
Oh, great, okay, we'll get that later. So, the priority areas, there's four priority areas that are covered in the report card, student achievement and ELA and math. This year, it would be two years of forward and then Badger, back from three years ago, and ACT is used at the upper grades, and then the alternative assessments that are, some of our special ed students might be taking. Another priority area is district growth, then closing the gaps, and then on-track post-secondary readiness. So, a couple of things, go back for a second, still, sorry. Couple of things to, to understand in this area is that the score for a district is variable depending on your demographics. So, it's pretty, it's, it's sort of on like the sliding scale. So, the higher your poverty level, the more growth counts versus student achievement. And the lower your poverty level, student achievement counts more than growth. So, it's weighted differently. So, for example, this year's report card for the, for our district, we had a 13.7 poverty rate, or free and reduced rate. So, that means if you look at the sliding scale, our student achievement counts as 39 percent of our score, and our growth counts as 11 percent of our score. And then, the gaps and on-track are both at 25 percent. So, just for an example, if, if a district has 50 percent poverty, let's say, then they would, their growth would count for 40 percent instead of the 11 percent that it counts for us. So, that along with the size of our district gives us some variability in our groups, particular to closing the gaps. So, I just wanted to sort of set the stage for that. Okay, so if we look at the district score, a couple of things to highlight, our overall score is an 81.2, that's up point five from last year. Last year, we were at 80.7. Couple of reasons that that score went up is we did go up in our growth indicator, which we'll talk about when we get to that page, and we also went down in our socioeconomic. So, last year, our free and reduced or poverty level was 15.4, and this year, it's 13.7. So, again, that affects that sliding score, very small, which could account for the small change in our score, but that, those are really the numbers that led to the change in the overall score. And then, you'll note that one of our schools, and that would be Woodview, scored significantly exceeds expectations, and all of our other schools are exceeds expectations. So, that's a great for our district, nobody's below exceeds expectations. So, that's a huge celebration. And then, down here, this is an overall percentage of proficiency. So, you can see our district ELA and our math proficiency is well above the state. And our ELA is sort of a trend that you'll see throughout the whole presentation, our ELA data is stronger than our math data, which is no surprise based on other data that we've shared, both with forward and math. But the, so that's a, that's a good, a great improvement for our district. All right, so how did we perform in achievement? So, first of all, we're clearly above the state, well above the state, we're well above the state in ELA, and actually went up about, let's see, two points from last year in our ELA achievement. And our math achievement is above the state, but we did go down a bit in math achievement from last year. So, that continues to be an area that we're, that we're looking at. Overall, our score is down just two tenths of a point, so we would say that's, you know, a good student achievement score for our district. Couple of things to mention related to that, too, that were in your highlights that you got along with this information. So, if we look at the CISA 1 school districts, which are the southeastern school districts, out of 32 of those districts, Grafton was 12th. And another good highlight is in the state, out of K-12 districts, there are 367, and Grafton was 33. So, we're performing in the higher portion of those groups. So, if we look specifically at student achievement, what I wanted to highlight here is that you can see I highlighted in yellow here. So, we really want to look at this, last year and this year. This is Badger, so it's a different, a different measure, but it's still in the calculations. But if we look at the two forward years, you can see that we went up in our percentage of advanced, and we went down in our percentage of below basic, both in ELA and in math. And that's the, that's what we want to do, we want to go up on the high end and down on the low end. And that's exactly what we did, what we did in student achievement. Also, the, the most recent years, so this year has weighted the most, this year has weighted the next, and then this year has weighted the least amount in the entire score of, of each school and each district. Reminding you also that the district score report card is not an average of all of the schools, it's its own entity or its own school, so to speak, okay? So, we have, you'll, you'll notice in the district, when we get to closing gaps, we have more, more groups for closing gaps than the, than the schools do individually, and that's just because it's bigger, the district is larger, obviously. All right? So, how did we perform in growth? So, now in growth, we're, so we're above the state, and what's interesting about this is that both for growth and for closing the gaps, there's a different weight depending on, on the group that you're in. So, for example, in, in our district, we have 606 students in the group that's Caucasian or white. And out of that, in, in, in ELA, that's weighted a certain amount, and it's weighted more or less depending on the group. So, for, for math, for example, students with disabilities, so if those, if the groups and, if the kids in the group of students with disabilities perform better in growth, that actually works better for your report card, it's weighted a little bit more than students in the white category. Or if students in the economically disadvantaged, if they perform better, it's weighted higher. So, when you look at the state, the number in those groups is a lot larger than the number in Grafton, okay? And so, it has an impact that's different than Grafton. So, when it, where it appears that we're just slightly above the state, it's not really comparing apples to apples because the groups are different, okay? It's good to be above the state, but one might say, well, why aren't we vastly above the state? And that's why, because the group, the groups are different, and the weight of those groups are different. But in each area in, so again, this is the pace of improvement from year to year of groups of students, so it's a cohort of third through, well, in this case, growth, fourth through eighth grade, because third graders would have taken it for the first time, so they're not part of the growth group, okay? What did I want to point out about this? So, basically, we're above the state, I just talked about that. Oh, we're up in the mathematics growth. So, last year, our growth in math was 27.3, and this year, it was 32.1. So, that's a really nice thing to see because we know math is an area that we're really working on. So, that was one thing I wanted to highlight there. Okay. Okay, so how did we perform in closing the gap? So, in closing the gap, again, it depends on your numbers, you have to have 20 students to actually form a group, all right? So, it, at, at the district level, we do have that many students. So, our closing the gaps are in pretty much every category, which we'll look at on the next slide. But again, it's the progress of those subgroups. So, it's the progress of your students, your economically disadvantaged as compared to their, the non-economically disadvantaged students. So, they do that comparison to see if their group, how that group is growing in comparison to the group that, that is opposite, essentially, okay? All right, so we closed just a couple, a couple key pieces here, you won't see it here, but it was in the detailed report. So, the number of students with disabilities scoring below basic in ELA has decreased a little from last year, and we closed more of the gap in math in the previous year than we did in ELA with, in all student categories. So, that's an important thing to see as well, and I'll show you a little bit of the detailed report on the next slide. So, in this case, so, the thing to note about closing the gaps is the best gap score would be if you have five years, and you can see like in this category, two or more races, there's only three years. So, they won't even give you a closing gaps if you don't have more than three years. So, you have to at least have three, but the best is to have five years of data, and essentially, it creates a slope, and you're comparing that slope, and if it's above zero or below zero. So, if it's above zero, you're going in the right direction, it's a positive slope. If it's below zero, you're going in the wrong direction, it's a negative slope, all right? So, in this case, again, it's five years. So, what we really want to ask is, is the gap increasing or is it decreasing, okay? So, in this case, so I highlighted as a district, we have these groups that all count. So, the Asian, we have Asian, Hispanic, Latino, two or more races for three years, and economically disadvantaged, and students with disabilities, which means we have at least 20 students in the district in those categories, in those subgroups, okay? I highlighted economically disadvantaged because you can see it's pretty small, but it is a positive number. So, that is our best area of, essentially, we're closing the gap the most in that area, and this is ELA, okay? But even in like students with disabilities, you can see it's negative, but it's .002, so it's very close to that zero mark. And once you hit the zero mark, you want to be, you want to start to go above. So, so that, that's a very good score, actually. But our, our best score is the economically disadvantaged group, we closed the gap the most with them, and this is ELA.
Okay, this is, they're obviously looking at, I would assume statewide numbers, because it's traditionally lagging student groups, whereas a traditionally lagging student group, say.
You mean how they identify the subgroups? Is that what you mean?
Yeah, well, what you're comparing it to, I mean, you, we can't, our traditionally lagging students are probably still, I would assume, significantly outperform traditionally lagging student groups from areas that are predominantly traditionally lagging.
Right, yeah, so it's.
Just because they live.
Yeah, so it's compared to the state group, yes.
So, that number, I would guess, could be volatile.
Yes.
Since we really don't have control.
Correct.
And, I mean, even among elementary schools, like Woodview's numbers off the charts compared to GES.
Correct.
In terms of closing the gaps.
And the other thing that's volatile about it is, is the smaller the number you have in our district, the more variance that can have. So, if there's only 20 students, or in some, like a GES and GHS where there's supergroups, where there's not enough in one area, and then they pull them together, that's the volatility of a smaller district.
Right, 10 more kids would make it.
Yep, absolutely.
So, when DPI released, and I'm sure you're reading it as you read any article about statewide, is that DPI released, because there's been a lot of variance, so there's a number of districts who had wide swings on their report cards this year compared to last year, and made, you know, questions to DPI, and I think there's like an asterisk or an arrow or something attached to their, to their number because their score is significantly different. And it's supposedly because of the variance of some of those, the growth, the closing the gap pieces.
So, then if we go to math, you'll see that it's not, it's not as good as ELA, which matches what we're seeing. However, in economically disadvantaged and students with disabilities, while economically disadvantaged, it's very close to zero again. And in fact, looking at last year, is we actually closed the gap more in the socioeconomic category in math than we did in the special ed. So, in special ed, the gap got a little bit bigger, but it, with the economically disadvantaged, it got a little bit smaller. So, again, overall, stronger in ELA, but did see some movement in the closing the gaps in math. Okay, so, if we keep going, how did we do, how did we do with readiness? So, with the post-secondary readiness, they look at four different categories, they look at graduation rate, attendance rate, third grade, ELA, and eighth grade math achievement. So, you can see here, this is, so overall, you know, we scored really well, okay? And you can see I highlighted here, again, we're moving in the right direction. So, this is the third grade ELA score, and you can see that from last year to this year, we moved up in advanced and proficient and down in basic and below basic. So, the right direction again that we want to be seeing. And then, this is the eighth grade math, and the same thing happened here. So, not as significant, although I, it's really small, so I can't, I can't really see it, it's even smaller on my paper. But I highlighted it to show that, so, I have to get up there, sorry. Okay, so here we have below basic, we were at 18.2 in math, and we went down to 15.2. So, that's the direction we want to see. In below basic in ELA, we went from 6.2 to 4.1. Now, in basic, we kind of stayed steady, but here, we moved down in math, we moved down from 50 to 33. So, great movement in math at, at the eighth grade level, and we moved up in both other, the, the high category. So, that's, again, that's what we want to see happen.
But in fairness, those grades, it's a different class.
Different, yep.
Okay.
So, what you want to do is you want to start to look at trends after you hit year three.
Okay.
When you can actually call it a trend, two years, you really can't call it a trend yet, but it's, it's better than going the other way.
Right, no, it's great.
So, so it's a good movement, so next year, as we see what happens next year, you know, our hope would be that we start to see a trend that even though there are different get, groups of kids. start to see a trend that even though they're different get, groups of kids, that eventually we're, we're making those, that kind of progress. Yep. All right. And then, um, the last measure is that student engagement indicator. So it, essentially, um, they're looking for a 95% test participation and, um, less than 13% of absenteeism and less than 6% dropout. We're not even close to meeting any of those on the low end. So, meaning we, we met both goals, we have no deductions in that area. So again, another place to highlight, um, for the district. Are there any questions about the district level before we go on to schools?
Do we have anything, and I know we've talked about this in past meetings, or will we see it maybe as a more fair question? That compares our student achievement and say our post-secondary readiness, readiness to surrounding schools? Or do we more do that based on our high school versus homestead in Seerburg versus the district?
From the report card section or just looking at ACT and forward data?
No, these scores. Because my assumption is somebody moving is going to look at this, I would think. It's been a long time since I moved, so, you know, they would pull up the...
Yeah, report cards are, they make a big episode, I'm saying like, report cards are not supposed to be like comparison, I mean, ACT score is a comparison, your forward exam is a comparison.
Because demographics are so different.
Demographics are different, but this, this is featured on our website. I mean, the fact that we, you know, have all of our schools either exceeding or significantly exceeding is a point of pride, um, that we want people to know.
Right.
But it isn't really, uh, as we're looking at some of our other, um, talking points, not talking points, but some of our data points in comparison, that's when we look at as a comparison. The report card isn't as much because there's some fluctuation and some that you would think, wow, I'm sort of surprised how low they are. And others are like, oh, I'm sort of surprised how high they are. Um, and doesn't make sense. And it's like, I can see Mr. Mantai shaking his head, yeah, that's right. Like, why is that? But either, either good or bad, you know? So it's, it's just, it's just, there's so many pieces to it. And for example, one of the pieces that gets impacted that the high school can talk about is their six-year graduation rate and we have, we have students that are ID, so they stated they're 21. Well, that actually counts against our score.
Right.
We're okay that it counts against our score because we believe those kids should still stay here, but it does count against, so it isn't apples to apples all the way across the board where 100% of your kids taking ACT, that's apples to apples. 100% of your kids taking, you know, the forward are going to go with that. So it isn't, is easily aligned, I guess, in that way. We had that discussion internally whether to show you that or not.
Right.
But we think we show you enough comparisons of our data points that we're looking at and that we use to drive our instruction, but this is just one more thing that goes into it.
Yeah, I asked because I'd like that, you know, that we show in the past.
Yep.
Comparing.
Yep.
I was wondering how, I don't love a lot of this, that's why.
Right.
Because it's relative.
Right. I think it's probably more important for us to continue to compare, um, the ACT like Jeff was saying and our forward scores, because it doesn't, it's not, it's not volatile, dependent on your groups in the same way as the report card. But that information is public and people can search for it.
We can get it for you. We can get it for you and we can share it with you and you could book it. Yeah, we could do that, but yeah.
Okay. Keep going.
Please.
Okay, so in looking at each building, so I'll start with Grafton Elementary and then the principals can come up and take on. So Karen put this screen, this slide together, I will try to do my best here. So her highlights were that the overall score for GES remains high, um, very high in student achievement, okay? And just so you know too, in, with, with, um, with GES, so each school has a different, potentially different closing the gap groups. So for GES, um, their group is students with disabilities, that's their main group. And then they have a, a supergroup of economically disadvantaged and ELL students together, okay? And that is where, an area where closing the gap shows up as something that, um, impacts in a negative way, GES's score. Their student achievement is superb, it's super high and, and they're doing really well with that. And so she talks about, um, one tenth of a point more would've, could've moved GES into the significantly exceeds category, okay? Again, now they, they're, the, remember I talked about that sliding score and the weightedness of it? So student achievement at GES, based on their economically disadvantaged percentage, their student achievement is weighted 40.7% and their growth is only weighted 9.3%. So their student achievement is a big, and that's great because they have a very high score with that, okay? So then she goes on to talk about student achievement in both content areas has increased. However, student growth in math has decreased slightly while ELA has increased from last year. So a point of, you know, point to watch and kind of continue to think about the things that we're doing with math. While GES's achievement is a celebration, and it even went up from, uh, last year, the challenge, um, again, is that closing the gaps. And she talks about those two groups, special ed and then the ELL socioeconomic group. It's improved in both content areas from last year. In fact, math has, um, had a significant increase from last year. So that's sort of an area where, um, she wants to kind of keep a highlight on. And every principal is kind of highlighting where they want to dig further in with their data and, and think about things with their, with their staff. So moving on from GES, I'm going to turn it over to Craig with Kennedy.
Does the clicker work?
No.
Are you clicking?
I'm clicking.
Okay. Thanks for having me and allowing me to talk about our Kennedy School Report Card. Um, I do have two slides, um, on the presentation and then also wanted to talk a little bit about some of our action steps related to our achievement and scores. So the first slide starts out with good news on our report card and we are at a 76.0, which is in the exceeds, exceeds expectations category. We are proud of this, um, that our student achievement exceeded state averages in reading and math when we look at the combined scores of third, fourth, and fifth grade kids. And we're really proud of our third grade ELA achievement scores. It's well above the state average with that score. I think it was of 18.1. Yep. And then also, we're proud of our improved attendance rate in comparison to the 15, 16 school year. So we've been working to get kids to school, to have access to the, the classwork and the curriculum. That's going well. When we look a little bit deeper at our achievement scores, we had some very strong performances within third grade ELA and math. Also within, um, fourth grade ELA and the fifth grade ELA too. And when we talk about the trends within math achievement and growth and some of the gaps that we're seeing, you will see that, I guess that math is an area of, of concern for us. Yep. So for room to grow for Kennedy, um, we did have an overall lower score compared to 15, 16. Um, while we remained in the exceeds expectations category, our, our score last year was an 82.6, and it's down to a 76.0 this year. Our school growth in ELA and math scored below the state average. And it's looking at kids who, um, were performing within grades four and five who had taken the forward exam two years in a row. That our closing the gap score in ELA and math scored below the state average. And for our group, looking at our gaps, it's the economically disadvantaged kids. And then while the combined math achievement for our school was above the state average, when we look closer at this, our fourth grade data, fourth grade achievement was below the state average. And this is actually for the second year in a row. So it's a concerning cohort and grade level that we're working with. Um, in response to this, um, we have been working hard within our teacher teams and also with our kids to address some of these scores and concerns. Very proud of our kids for working hard and for showing up every day and for engaging. Also proud of our teachers for partaking in the professional development and coaching opportunities that we have. So it's, it's a mixed feeling where there's a lot of pride and satisfaction there, but also a level of concern for some of the achievement and growth pieces. Um, we have worked hard with our instructional coaches to wrap around classrooms that are struggling. We've pinpointed the kids who have struggled. And while these scores show representations across an entire grade level, we've dug down to look at specific students and their needs within ELA and math. And that's been very helpful at our PLCs and also our IST meetings. Um, we've worked hard to include children with special education needs within the core curriculum. When we have children who may have academic needs, what we've been working with is to make sure that they have access to the core curriculum with that grade level teacher so they're not missing material. And in some cases, we're working to fill in learning gaps that may be there while also teaching to the grade level standards that are current. And it's trying to find that mix between skill development and also looking at the current standards and power standards within ELA and math. Um, we, when we look at our, our kids and rallying around them, those kids who haven't demonstrated the growth, and we have worked to allocate every possible resource to them, whether it's our interventionists, coaches, classroom instruction and teachers. And we're really trying to dig down to the individual and small group level to impact this. And we are working on it. Um, it's a level of awareness and concern to me as the principal and instructional leader and also to our teacher teams as well. And, um, we're doing everything possible to address these scores and improve upon So before we move on, I guess to other schools, are there any questions that I could help you with?
I just have a broad question. What happens to these scores next year as we eliminate GES?
Two years from now.
For two years from now, two years.
You might see a fluctuation.
Are there things we need to do?
When you're, when you're tracking the individual students, um, that's really the key. So you're, if you're, no matter what school they go to, or no matter what grade level they're in, if we're tracking how individual students are doing and providing interventions or enrichments for them, then that's going to improve student achievement, which will positively impact any measure that we would look at with them. But will it, will it impact the scores? Yes.
According to our report card, Rick is, as the assessment coordinator, is looking into the process that occurs with DPI when you eliminate a school. Because you're right, you won't have, uh, you won't have three different schools and Woodview will have more kids and half of GES kids and Kennedy will have the others. So obviously, um, our, our ability to, outside of looking at individual students like Jeff was talking about, our ability to, to look at growth as a school is going to be very different, obviously. So, and, and there are some steps that we probably have to take as a district. Rick is taking that on and looking into that.
Well, and at what level are all, do all buildings go down to that individual student level in every case? Because it becomes imperative two years from now.
Yeah. We, we talked... Both, the schools can all, yeah, the, when the principals report out, they'll, I'm sure they'll, they'll share that as well, but everyone's looking at that data.
Right, because this is, this is based on forward.
It's, so we know this data really well, or it's based on ACT data. So those are pieces that they've, they've looked at. And kids that are close to proficient, they're just missing it, or close to, you know, they're at the basic level, where are they going? They're looking at to see what they're doing with that.
At one of the previous board meetings, we were talking about the IST processes and the opportunities for PLCs and grade levels and teams to meet. And the forward data is part of that, where we can see achievement score, whether it's basic or proficient or advanced. And then looking at kids who are right in the bubble of proficient, so we can see the percent range of a child within a basic range, for example. And they may be at like the 98th percentile of the basic range on the cusp of scoring proficiently. And that's, that's a point of identification and work and concern that we consider when we pour our efforts into the kids.
And that's specific to, at Kennedy, that fifth grade group that has been two years now behind, now the fifth grader, so they were behind the state at third grade and at S fourth grader. So, so that was part of the process in looking at their math and their forward and identifying the needs, but also, like Craig mentioned, um, looking at core instruction and how can we, how can we get more effort in that area to try to fill those gaps that the kids have?
And that has been a benefit of us moving from part-time interventionist as well to full-time and being able to utilize people that are here consistently, are involved in professional development, are here when students aren't here, that are working alongside of teachers at all times. And we're seeing, uh, more focused opportunity with our staff as well.
Right, and the flexibility in using a math interventionist who's K.8 and, and prioritizing because she's working with our highest need students and then prioritizing her to give some of her time to aid in that fifth grade, um, classroom or classrooms in a way that supports students and the teacher.
Well, it would seem that instructional leadership in two, three, has embraced a need to understand this data and to improve. What is the reaction within staff itself? And are they equally embracing it?
I can talk about that a little bit. Um, there are, there are varying levels of, of interest, but it is of paramount importance that we pursue these, these efforts. And so when we talk about our coaches going in and looking at what's happening with the universal instruction, it's a priority and an expectation from me as a supervisor and administrator to make sure that these pieces are happening and to address them promptly so that we're using our resources responsibly. Overall, I'm very impressed with how people have been engaging in professional development opportunities and also the coaching opportunities. They've been very receptive, very concerned and interested in pursuing better instruction for these kids who are struggling.
I mean, when we looked at the five years of, of math data and teachers looked at the individual data and made goals and talked with principals outside of our staff development day, you know, teachers want their data to show that they're doing a good job and they're bothered when it doesn't. So I would say it's uncomfortable, um, and it would be for me as well, and it, and it probably is for Craig sitting in front of you right now. It's uncomfortable, but we own it and, and, you know, we have to put that aside and do what's right by kids. So that's the message we're sending to our teachers and that they're not in it alone, but they need to own their data.
Yeah. Okay. Diana, that, I, I agree with that. It seems like that, that's all focused on when you say the numbers. All those things that we've talked about many times, that's focused on student achievement. I mean, that's what we can control from DPI changing, closing the gaps and what's weighted. I mean, that just seems like that would be a really tough thing and maybe not worth the energy to distract from what it seems like we're already doing or you're already doing. Because you said, if student achievement is up, then, I mean, it probably takes care, within reason, we might move around, but we're not going to drop to meet few expectations with solid student achievement numbers across.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks for the opportunity. So I took the opportunity to share our school report card with our leadership team and I did it in a form of, a, a big graph. I showed last year's and this year's and we folded it in half and we looked at the first side and we celebrated the fact that we continue to be significantly exceeds expectation. And we celebrated for a few minutes and then we quickly opened it up and saw that we were significantly exceeds expectation last year, but we've gone down. So we talked about that trend. What happens if this trend continues? Will we stay in that area? So we took a moment to celebrate and then we got to work on what we can do next. Um, we looked specifically at the areas that we were successful at, which were student achievement. We saw an increase in ELA from last year overall in student achievement and, and a decrease in math, which is kind of reflective of Diana's trend that she's talked about from the district. We also saw some positive, um, successes within on track and post-secondary readiness. Our third grade English, English, language arts achievement improved and is helping to contribute to that significant needs exceeds expectations. But as we think about those third grade teachers setting a really high bar, um, we have now seen, um, a decline in school growth. Um, last year, that was a really strong, um, priority area for us and we saw some drops in growth. And when I was here talking about our forward data, um, a couple months ago, we have significant concerns with our, our current fifth grade group. Um, we had 80% of those students who were advanced or proficient as third graders. When that same group of kids took the test in fifth grade, it went to 50%. So what are we doing with those fifth grade students? And kind of to speak to your question, Paul, about getting down to the student, Jeff's back-to-school presentation in the, in the fall was putting a picture, putting a name to a, a piece of data. And so we've done that at grade levels. Um, you know, I've embraced our parent-teacher group to show them some of our data, to ask, how can, how can parents help support? So in January, we're inviting our fourth and fifth grade parents in to, to see this data, not just as a school, but on their own child and what can they do for action steps? Um, you know, as I presented to our parent-teacher group, they said, well, maybe you could send out an information, you know, pamphlet before the test and tell them to make sure that they get a good night's sleep and, and eat a healthy breakfast in the morning of the test. And that's just one small... And that's just one small piece. That's the day of the test. What are we doing the months to prepare them with math content, math practice standards, and how can parents help support that? So that's something we're doing to embrace parents in the process, but we're excited that we continue to be exceeding expectations, but we're not going to just rest on the fact that we're there because the trend is in, in, I guess, going the wrong way right now. So, questions you have on Woodview's data? I guess to speak to one more point. Sorry, Kevin. We talked about our subgroups. In the area of closing the gaps, last year, we actually had a perfect score in English Language Arts, and we had two subgroups. We had economically disadvantaged and special ed as a subgroup. This year, we just had the one subgroup, and so our special ed teachers were disappointed they didn't get that subgroup because we really celebrated the work they did, and you can point it to one specific group in that case. Economically disadvantaged is tied to our title and all of our staff, but that is one shift and one change, just because our, our numbers fell in special ed that we don't have a large enough subgroup, but something that we'll have to take a look at when we move to a bigger building next year that will have more of those subgroups too.
All right. Time for the middle school, started the secondary report cards. Great news for us is that we, we went up from a previous score. The previous year, we were 77.3. This year, our overall score was 79.5, exceeds expectations. Our student achievement did go up again in correlation with what the district saw in ELA, went down in math. Our overall combined achievement was up though from the previous year. Our big area that we, we noticed last year was our school growth. We were below the state average in both last year. This year, our ELA growth went up to 37.8, which was a rise in 5.7 points, and math went up 7.6 points. So overall, our growth grew, grew by 13.3 points. And this was, I know this is kind of a side note, but somebody had asked last year, when they went on Zillow, somebody brought up, why is John Long ranked lower on Zillow? I contacted Zillow last year. I was, I was curious because he came up at the board, and I know like eighth grade achievement and math. It is based, they said, on whatever test score reporting they get and based on growth. So I think we went up a little bit this year, but just as a point, somebody brought it up last year. I did follow up just out of curiosity because it was one of those things. So I learned that, closing the gaps. We went down in ELA slightly and up in, in mathematics achievements gap. We do have three subgroups. We have Hispanic, Latino, economically disadvantaged, and students with disabilities. We have 20, at least 20 in each of those in our building. One thing that we're trying to do to address our ELA that did drop is that some of our programming for students with disabilities who are performing really low in ELA achievement, we're not necessarily getting grade level, we're either being pulled out and getting provided a different course. We have changed that so that all students are getting grade level ELA this year. So that is something that we fixed from last year, my first year to this year, saying that every student will be in the grade level appropriate ELA course. And if they need extra additional support, we need to find that at a different time in the day. So that is something that we changed to address that. Overall mathematics achievement, again, went down. We continue to have a 6-8 math, math team action plan that we had last year that we started when that, when we got our first initial reports. We're continuing to do that. On-track post-secondary readiness has really not changed. We were 90.3 last year, we're at 90.3 this year. So doing well. One thing that we did do last year that was different from the previous year in order to get ready for the forward is that we did do class presentations. I did one for each class. And then we also gave our staff some training, and this is the part that we carry on that I think Michael kind of thought, it's not just for one test. What are we doing every day in our classroom? What are our common formative assessments look like? Are they rigorous? Are they, are they matching the same rigor that students are seeing in these high stakes testing? And that's, that's the key to everyday work. So when we get to our ISTs this year, we looked at trend data for students in, in MAP and forward, and then we really dug down that way to look at our individual students. And again, now we're also looking at how are they performing individually and starting to track that on a daily basis in the class. Questions for John Long? Thank you.
Okay, so, moving on to Grafton High School. First of all, I want to start off by highlighting a couple of points of pride. Certainly, our graduation rate continues to be a point of pride within our high school. It was at 97.5%. That's something that has been strong for us for a very, very long time. And obviously, our teachers and staff takes great pride in working with all of our students to get them to graduate and complete, which we're super proud of. One of the things that Jeff mentioned a little bit earlier, which is a little bit frustrating, within that same data and information, a couple of our students who are labeled ID or intellectually disabled, you know, they continue, they continue to move on beyond four years in our building, and we want them to because they have the right to be able to do that. Unfortunately, that counts against us in our graduation rate scores. So it would be even higher if that's, if that was not the case. So certainly something I just wanted to point out to you. We continue to exceed state averages in our ELA and our math achievement overall. So very proud of our overall achievement scores on the report card. No significant changes. ELA up a little bit, math down a little bit, but overall achievement, you know, very close to where we were last year as well. What you'll notice on our report card is there's not a student growth section on the high school report cards at all, and really, they're just, they're just measuring the one day, one test, the ACT, that, that our students take in the winter of their junior year. So that's really what you need to know in terms of why there's not a growth component to, to that. The last piece that was related to achievement, which I wanted to point out, was that we had the highest percentage of students scoring advanced in the last three years in ELA. So it's nice to see students getting up into that top category that Diana was referring to a little bit earlier, and seeing a little bit of a trend there within our ELA, one of the reasons that the overall score in ELA went up at the high school level. Two areas to look at, really, it all comes down to one area, closing achievement gaps for our students in what we have what's called an all-three supergroup. So we have students with disabilities, economically disadvantaged students, and ELL students all lumped into one supergroup. And that supergroup basically is looked at and compared with peers at the state in the other categories. So when you take a look at that, our closing the gap scores were a little bit below the state average in the area of English, Language Arts, and Math. When you look at the graduation rate gaps, once again, that continues to be a strength as we significantly exceed in, in that area. So that's a point, point of pride. When you look at the closing the gaps, and one of the things that we're already doing based on the ACT data that we've shared with you on multiple occasions already this year, is really taking a look with our math and commerce departments and already having conversations with them about professional developments that we'll be putting into place. On math, specifically with some best practices, instructional strategies that our teachers will be working with in the winter and spring. We're also having placement discussions with our math team, already to talk about increasing the level of content exposure for our students with appropriate support. So when you look at our students with the gaps, or students that are really underperforming, we're really looking at that content or curricular level exposure, and we're already engaged in conversations with math team about that based on ACT data, which we shared earlier. And really, in communication arts, we're just beginning some of those conversations as well about a placement of students in particular courses. And we really believe that beginning, have those conversations within that transition from eighth to ninth grade, so as students come into us as the ninth grade level, is an effective place for us to start if we really want to see systemic change over the course of the next number of years. Quite honestly, because we are an all-three supergroup, and we have so few students in these groups, a couple of students could change this significantly next year, so the scores could go up, but it doesn't necessarily mean that we have solved any issue. So I think by us starting these conversations and focusing on instructional practices in the classroom for all, what's best for all of our kids, and really starting with the placement of students as they enter our high school as freshmen, will be the biggest bang for our buck in the long run with, with this. But we're proud of what we've accomplished, and, and I thank our staff for all the hard work that they've done with our kids over, over time. Any questions? Good. Thank you.
Just to quickly wrap up, you've heard, I think, most of this talked about by each principal, but how are we using this information so much like with forward and ACT and math? Go ahead. We're looking at, number one, our core instruction. That is the most important. We have to continuously review and make sure that our core instruction, our teachers are supported with professional development, with materials they need, and that we keep that rigor up for all students. So what have we done? We've done a lot of things in literacy, starting our focus on math. We've changed our literacy coaches to instructional coaches, so we get that support in core instruction in other areas, particularly math. We're going to continue to keep that math focus. We have action plans going on in multiple areas regarding math. We have an RTI leadership team brought back together where we will be also looking at college and career readiness indicators that we can monitor as a district, potentially like a third grade reading score, like attendance, things like that, that we can start to monitor internally for growth. Continued professional development in literacy, especially with the specialization decision that, that we just came to, and then continued our work on 612 Common Formative Assessments, creating them, using the ones that we have well. And the last slide just talks about how those things really impact closing the gap. So closing, closing the gap is really not about a program or a thing. It's about really good core instruction for all students and keeping kids engaged and giving them the support they need. So what have we done? You know, we've identified students, you've heard Craig talk about that, and giving the support that they need in core instruction, double dosing when, when they need that in an area like reading or math, getting John Long students into appropriate ELA courses. That was a move that Kevin made this year. AVMR training, which is math recovery, requiring that of all K-2 teachers, is something we started last summer. High amount of practice of using that instructionally with kids, using our data to identify different ways that we can help our students. And, and really, next steps is just continuing that work, staying on course, and then really looking at how we're using those Common Formative Assessments in our PLC model that we're going to strengthen with additional training, and, and really thinking about how we can, on a regular basis, be asking that question, what do we do if our students don't know it? What do we do if our students do know it? And again, it's not about a program. It's about really good instruction that's, that's targeted to students on a regular basis, not three times a year, but all the time. So those are the things that we're really working on, and that, that will close the gap versus, you know, some special program. So it's really about our core instruction, and that's where we're putting our focus.
So if and when we do those focus area things, the things on these two slides, if and when we do those and we sustain them, what should we expect? Ever increasing scores at a building level? Never being below the state average?
Well, that's what we would hope, absolutely. We wouldn't want to be, so that's what we want to see, and we would expect to see that.
That's what we would expect.
Yeah. Not to be below the state, for sure. We would expect to see our gap closing, that, that kids that are below are making more than a year's worth of growth. We would expect to see that if we have really strong RTI processes in place and strong in core instruction, we should see that gap close.
So when do we determine that we have effectively implemented the things on these two slides and have sustained them such that it's reasonable to begin that expectation? Not below state averages and ever increasing scores?
Well, with the report card, as the state changes their, their, their criteria, I mean, that's what you say, you know, the thing that says right here at the bottom, note, outlier score fluctuation is noted by whatever that thing is. Any school or district report has a 10-point or greater change, up or down. There's, there's districts that had a 10-point up or down. That's a monster. That's not, why? That's just like, did I get lucky? Did I get unlucky? Like, you know, what does that mean? So if you're talking about the report card, well, yeah, I mean, there's certain things that maybe, I don't know if will ever be above the state average because of, if that keeps changing, and our demographic is different, but student achievement is the thing that we're, that we're looking at. And so you'll know, you're never going to be, we're never going to say we've reached that plateau and we're done because it's a new group of students that you're working with, and, and continuous improvement model, you're always trying to improve. So when you're looking at, you're looking at three years of data, that's when you're starting to see, okay, so we're seeing our math scores go up a little, or they're going down, but that's a concern, and we're trying to address that, so we should start seeing those scores go up. If our scores don't start going up and we're looking at it, then we're looking at it the wrong way. We're either looking at it the wrong way, we've got the wrong teachers, we've got the wrong curriculum, we've got the wrong principals, we've got the wrong superintendent. Let's, let's start at the bottom, obviously.
[laughing].
But that's, you know, you sort of, you sort of start picking that apart because over time, like, why aren't we improving? We say we're focusing on it, but it isn't improving. So like, you know, that's what you're looking at, and teachers looking at individual students is really, really the, the impetus for improved student achievement.
The other piece, and you referenced this earlier, and we chuckled a bit when we talked about Zillow, and we talked about those things, but the report card, this is outwardly facing public data that people look at to make a decision as to where they may or may not move their kids.
Which hopefully people say, you know, hopefully people that are in the room that are reporters would say that all of our schools either exceed or significantly exceed on the report card. I mean, like, that's a, that's something that we say is a talking point. Like, that's a true statement, and we're pleased with that.
And I would agree, but if, if this isn't the best indicator, this report card, and other pieces of data are better indicators, we talked about MAPs, scores, forward, and ACT, let's make sure that minimally, that, that the data or the information that's put together through the chamber, for instance, that they're aware of those things, and that in those publications, and they have handouts to people that are moving here. Okay, you might see these things, but these are the things that we focus on. These are the things that we find most important. It's a competitive situation in every aspect.
Right.
Are people moving here? Are they moving to Cedarburg? Are they moving to McWhon? Are they moving to Fort Washington? Where are they moving to? And the school has a big role to play.
And that's, you look at like the redesign of the website this year, us updating teacher pages, like, there's so many pieces that we are trying to do to be, even today, we're meeting about 4K, purchasing yard signs to have out, making people aware of the opportunities that we have, choosing the same week for 4K registration, so every year, the yard signs are reused, like, all those pieces. So that, you know, just being more streamlined, being more strategic with our focus, I think will be a beneficial piece for us as well.
Thanks, Diana.
Yep.
Thank you, principals.
Okay, so we have a gift report.
Yep, so we have one gift report that we'd ask the board to approve from an anonymous donor. This is for Kevin Moore brought it forward. It's the senior individual basketball banners. So they, last year, they have a large number of seniors, so they have one banner, but they're looking to have funding for these individual banners. So it's for $730. We would ask the board to approve that donation.
Is this for boys and girls?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mander.
What should we approve?
Close the paper, say aye.
Aye.
Closed. And construction update.
Construction update, you know, the weather is, is really looking great for the next two weeks even for construction to continue. We're starting to see a ton of masonry start going up at Kennedy this week. We've seen the roof choice on at Woodview, a ton of different projects that are occurring. This is, Jamie took these pictures on Friday or on Saturday?
Friday.
Friday at the soccer field. So they've, they've installed the drainage, so you can see, you know, the center, they've cut out the center, they, they filled it, and then the drainage is coming out, so it's coming in there. So we haven't had that in the past, so the water that's been there's just been going down. So they, they've set that up. I think there's three of them there. So you can certainly see the field is totally, they've pulled all the, all the dirt off, they, how, they went down.
Yeah, so there's 18 railroads that are basically running on both north, sorry, east and west, whole ones, and they run And then it exits out through a culvert on the north side of the field.
So it looks way different, but the weather has really helped us. Jamie, what is that?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that is-
Yeah, that is one of the laterals.
Yeah, that's one of the laterals, right? Means all that is, yep. Yeah. So they've installed. So the weather's helped us with that, to be able to get as far as we thought we could get with that area. They've worked on over at Woodview as well for the, John Long for the tennis courts. That area's been cleaned off.
Yeah, the drainage will be completed, subbase, everything is ready to be ready to go for asphalt in the spring.
So the weather's, and the weather will be helping us obviously with some of our winter conditions for our budget as well, so it's great to have that. And a lot of work was being done at all of our sites on Friday. They were taking advantage of that weather and trying to get as much work done before the winter hits.
And so just a couple of things that you're going to be seeing now, probably in the next couple of weeks, we're going to be at all of the schools, including John Long Middle School. We're going to be, electricians will be working inside our buildings until rough second shift, somewhere around 12, 1 o'clock in the morning. And so I'm going to be working with the principals on that and that will last the rest of the school year. A couple of other things that Kennedy, we're going to be starting the utilities, which I notified Craig of. So right now, we're going to start on Washington, Wisconsin Avenue, and we're going to be running the stormwater towards the Kennedy Elementary School. So you're going to be seeing that area trenched and lift up a little bit. And then Friday, possibly Friday, we're going to be connecting the storm sewer on 11th Avenue. So that I have to work out with the police department because basically what we will have to do is close down that road in this half of it. So we're going to have to, right after the buses drop off in the morning, they will have until 3 o'clock till the buses arrive, make that connection and back. Also, JFK, because the gas meter falls within the footprint of the new kitchen, we're going to use the warm weather this Wednesday to cut gas, which will eliminate our boilers that they open before 4:00 period. And if everything goes well, we have that bathroom line that's going to be licensed. And at Woodview Elementary, we're going to be cleaning out the receiving area, working with Michael on that. And starting next week, we're going to be installing the new electric distribution switching station in that area. So there's some activity happening inside the building.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you, Jamie. So I'll look for a motion to convene and close session and consider a student request involving social and personal history. This is in accordance with Wisconsin State Statute 1985-1 Act. Grab that motion.
Send it.
Jerry, how do you vote? Do you have to say yes?
Yes.
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 Saying yes.
Yes.